So we have this hard copy. We don't have the large copies because our large copy printer is broken. And so this is what you have for right now. The first thing, we have three guests who are going to be sharing some information with you. We have Ricky Michael, who's going to talk to us about athletics and activities. And then we have Paul Lee and George Nolan, who are going to talk to you a little bit about the ALC program. And then Kathy Moon, who was here and had a family emergency, so I'm going to be sharing with you some of the things about the consulting fees that you had asked about. So we're going to start with that, and I'm going to ask Ricky to just share with you the process he went through to look at athletics and activities for budget reduction options.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'm kind of nervous. I've never been to a work session before, so bear with me a little bit. But that being said, I was directed to find out, be creative, how I could come up with $70,000 worth of either cuts or revenue ideas. And I think that our department's a little bit different than the others because we have the ability to generate revenue through different ways. And so what we did was, we came up with ideas, we went to coaches, and they came up with ideas of what can we do to come up with $70,000 worth of cuts or generating revenues? We also talked to our advisors in the fine arts as well. So what we did was, we created a list. Once we had the list out, you can see on the handout, there were 24 ideas. What we did then was Jackie Delhun created a survey form, and we surveyed coaches and fine arts advisors with the different ideas for cuts or revenue generating options. We gave them three options in the survey: strongly agree, things to consider, or strongly disagree. We tallied up all the results, and what we decided was, we were going to consider for revenue generating or cuts, things that were 70% or greater between consider and strongly agree. Now, if you look at the list, every one but one actually falls in line with that. The one that doesn't, the one that coaches especially did not want, was the elimination of sport supply budgets. But, there's a little caveat to that. In one of them, we asked for, we suggested an increase in fees of $70. $20 of that would go to the school district, basically. $25 would go to a supply budget for that particular activity, and $25 would go to a uniform budget for that particular activity. So in the long run, it's 25, 25 per participant. Now, all of a sudden, their supply budget increases, and they now have a uniform budget built in. So that kind of takes away that, you know, the bad idea of cutting their supply budget. So they most agreed with that. As you can see by the list, the first 15 basically come into play. And the last ones were line item out.
I would like to interrupt with that, because there was an executive decision, as Ricky and I were working through this, on number 23, which is stricken, that says eliminate dome rental time. It actually placed quite high on the survey results, but it doesn't do anything for us because we lease levy. And so ultimately, if we were to cut it, yes, it would be a cut in expense, but it would also be a cut to our levy, so it's neutral. So that's why it's stricken. Can we do it? Sure, but it's not, it's not going to impact our bottom line, because whatever we lose in expense, we're going to lose in revenue. So that, that got moved. There was also one other change that wasn't, wasn't part of the survey that Ricky added after, which would be elimination of his postseason travel reimbursement. And that too was not, he did not ask that question, but he was willing to put that on the list to reflect a potential adjustment. So those would be the two items that aren't, that don't coincide the survey to what the sheet that, that is in front of you.
Can you just explain that a little bit more? Eliminating the dome rental time, so we rent space in the dome from the city of Stillwater owns that, right?
Correct.
So when you say eliminate dome rental time, what would make up for that? You're saying we would use our own space, or?
Well, that's possible, or you transfer the cost on to the club that, like if it's hockey, or if it's soccer, that gets transferred on to those particular organizations as opposed to the district doing it. What, what is allowed, though, under our lease, under our levy, is a lease levy for school activities. And so whatever we spend, which is 50 to 65 a year, $50,000 to $65,000 a year in leasing costs, we then recover through our levy.
Okay, so the cost that we're use, the, the, the cost to, to rent dome time is being covered currently by a lease levy?
Correct.
Correct, correct. And, and the idea that I had was, case in point, like this fall, soccer. The longer soccer goes, the chance, greater the chance that the weather is going to be bad. And rather than have them practice outside in the snow, in the rain, or in the cold weather, they go over to the dome, they get a good practice in. All of our coaches were in agreement that, you know what, that's something that we can, we can give up if we have to.
Thank you.
So are you going to walk through this?
I can.
The 15, and just talk about them a little bit, maybe?
Yeah.
If we want to comment.
Yeah, absolutely.
A question I've got, and I, I can wait with it, because it's actually number four. All of those seem to have something that the kids who are in those activities get out of that activity, except National Honor Society, charging them a, a fee just seems odd to me, because most kids have to get a certain grade point and do other kinds of things to qualify for. I'm not sure what they receive back.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's why we lumped all the clubs with a paid advisor, because those clubs that have paid advisors, National Honor Society, Math League, Key Club, community service type groups like Key Club, Pep Band, they all have a paid advisor. And in what ways could you make that more cost neutral? Because that is always going to be an expense to the school district. So can you, can you charge them a nominal fee of $10 to $20 for those types of things? And have them participate?
But what I'm saying, it strikes me as odd.
Yep.
You've earned a right to be in National Honor Society, but now you have to pay for that, right?
And I think you could say that for, not necessarily earn the right, but with Key Club, those are volunteer, I mean, that's a community volunteer service group. You have student council, that's another community service or a school service group. We just lumped them together for that.
Does student council have a fee?
No, currently no.
But in this proposal?
They do have, yeah.
This would be lumped in with that?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, maybe you should just go through them if, if that's okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. So currently, what we have is an independent provider fee, number one. Independent provider fee, right now, is $50. Independent provider fee, an independent provider is an outside organization or an outside person that offers our students an opportunity to participate in an activity. Examples would be mountain biking, clay trap, equestrian. Those types of things, students have the ability to letter. They have to follow a criteria based on what the advisor has written up, and they can earn a letter through that. Right now, currently, all those people that wish to letter in those outside activities pay a fee of $50. We would increase that to $75.
Was there any consideration of, because like mountain biking, you pay three different, so the cost gets pretty high. Is there any consideration of what students might be paying as a total package to participate in those outside things?
We have worked with Kelvin a little bit, tried to get that into a one-payment type thing, and then they reimburse, once they have their total of, let's say they have 100 participants. They would have, they'd be responsible for 100 participants at $75.
Which I think would be great to get that all together, but I think what I'm asking is, you know, 5K, 50 here, and 75 here, and 100 here, and we're trying to keep sports costs down for our district sports programs. Was there any thought of how much that is driving cost up for things like mountain biking by increasing that fee?
Unfortunately, I think we're in a, I think we're in a user-based day and age, where people are kind of, if you're going to have something offered to you, it is going to cost in some way, shape, or form. I think that some of the things that they have the opportunity to use, like the shuttle buses and those types of things, are costs to the district that get incurred. And when you run a shuttle bus from Oakland, and you run a shuttle bus from Stillwater Middle, you're looking at $80 a day for those shuttle buses five days a week. Well, that's a cost. That's a cost to us.
Yeah, which I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I'm just saying, when you start to look at total costs, if we consider that.
And the only thing that we can control is that one-third facet that we have. We can't control, when mountain biking, I believe, they have to pay an organization fee for the mountain bike club, and do they have kind of a, another fee for, like their picnics and things like that, when they go to a meet?
You pay two different organizations, and then you also pay for races on the side.
Oh, that's right, races is the other one. Yep.
Ricky, because it's going to have application to these others, does youth advantage help out in everything that's listed there?
They do, they do.
For those who qualify?
For those who qualify. They have come forward. Mountain biking has had a couple, clay trap has had a few. Clay trap has probably more been helped by youth advantage than any of the others.
So would it be fair to say, anyone who has difficulty or a challenge to, to participate in those because of cost would have an opportunity through youth advantage?
Correct, correct. But the other thing, the other thing that we want to point out is, we have never, ever turned away an individual for any kind of activity in the activities office. If we have to, if we have to figure something out, we deal with the families, and if they, if they literally can't afford a dime, we will waive the fee. We do not want money to be the thing that discourages somebody from participating. And I think we've done a pretty good job of that.
I agree with that, but sometimes it's hard for kids that you don't know very well.
Yep, yep, yep. We try to say, we try to make it, through the advisors, through the coaches, we try to make that known to them. But if you're somebody that comes from outside the district, let's say you moved in from the summer, there probably is a little bit of a disconnect. We could probably improve in that area.
Thank you.
Yep. Number two, increase the cost of fan buses to, for students to state tournaments. We're looking at increasing the price a dollar or two, from $5 to $7. It's been, it's been a cost to the district. It's great, volleyball gets to state, it's great, we have five fan buses, kind of makes a difference if we have the game during the school day, and one that's at night, we have found that out. When they're at night, we, we tend not to have a, a need for school fan buses, they tend to get there on their own. But during the school day, we really load up. They're very excited to go. Number three, increase in concert tickets by a dollar, $8 and $6. We have talked to the advisors on that, band, choir, and orchestra. I think all of them understand the reality of things costing more. I think one of our choir people was a little bit hedgy on it, didn't really agree to it, but the other five from the fine arts department were okay with that.
And then no, no free admissions to concerts?
Yeah, no free admissions to concerts. That will probably be something that we look at. That was more of a, a staff thing, and we were actually, at one time, talking about the senior citizen ticket discount, the discounted pass. But I think if we look down, I think we've kind of gone off that one.
Ricky, do students, you know, students attend, do they have a student fee structure? Or?
For fine arts?
Yeah, like for showing up at some of these concerts, do they have a different fee structure?
They do not, they just have a student price.
Okay, so student, just student price?
Correct, correct, correct.
Ricky, may I ask, these that we, who gets these?
Those are very valuable, by the way.
Fifty bucks.
You know what? At this table, you might get 75 for that. We are given, we are given 75 of those.
Okay.
And usually, we give it to staff and board members. We usually don't give it out to community members. And that's the way the conference has dealt with the situation. Every school in our conference gets 75 of those passes.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I just didn't know.
That's more of a conference thing.
Got it, got it.
Number four, we've touched on a little bit, are there any other questions to number four?
Just a follow-up, I would be sure. Where it says et cetera, should student council?
Student council would be in et cetera, yep.
What would the fee have to be if it were $5,000, based on the number of kids that you have?
I think we buried it, I think it was between 10 and 20. It depended on what group you were with. NHS was a $10, Key Club was a $10, and I think the rest were $20.
And Pep Band is the one that we expect the kids to come to basketball, or wrestling, or hockey and play.
Correct.
So we expect the kids to come there. We get a small turnout generally anyhow compared to some other schools. And now we're going to say, in order to play, we want you to pay $10 to $20?
Yep, and it's a lettering, it's a lettering option for them, too. In that respect, it's no different than some of our clubs that offer lettering. It's no different than an independent provider. It's no different than, except for the hours that you commit to it, it's no different than a sport.
Yeah. I know you get a letter, but again, we, we, the, the coach of that activity probably would like a Pep Band there. He probably has to.
It helps the atmosphere, no doubt about it, no doubt about it.
It seems like another funny one to me, that we're charging and saying, we'd like you to come and play for basketball. Well.
By the way, pay $20.
Yeah, by the way.
Yeah, we do.
How badly do you know?
Ricky, how about, for like the chamber orchestra, is that included?
No.
That's not considered a club?
No.
Ricky, number four, again, I have a question, community service, is that an activity?
Key Club, that would be Key Club.
Okay, thank you.
So what's the difference with, between chamber orchestra and Pep Band? Is chamber orchestra a class period?
Chamber orchestra is a class period, it's also, it's also a concert group. I mean, you go to a chamber orchestra concert, you're going to watch them, you're going to get nicked on the ticket prices there. And we also think that that's academic. It's tied to the academic piece.
Pep Band practices before school yet?
After school.
After school.
Interesting, some of the choirs are like that, too, right? Some, some choirs are a class, you're taking them during the day, and others are after school activities.
Correct.
So it'd be a fee for an after-school activity, but not one that was a class?
We have tried to stay away from the music type things, with the exception of Pep Band.
So why?
Pep Band is the only one that would, would have a fee?
Yeah.
Nothing else would.
Yeah.
So what's the reasoning that that was?
Pep Band doesn't technically have a concert tied with it, that was our rationale.
Because you're not generating funds in other ways for them.
Correct.
Prom committee, I'm just a little curious about that one. You don't letter in prom committee, right?
You don't letter, but you get the free ticket. Which for some, it's pretty valuable.
Okay. How many kids, I should know this, because I have one that was on it last year, how many kids are typically on the prom committee?
Anywhere from 15 to 20.
Okay, okay.
Maybe mark down number four and say, we're having trouble with that one.
I know, I said, I didn't mean to be here till 4 o'clock.
Absolutely, yeah, okay.
Actually, that raises the question, so we're looking at all of these, we're going to go through them, but at some point, are we, are we going to probably make a decision here? Is this, where, where are we going with this, just so I have a sense of, like, are we going to be able to pick some of these off of here and take them off? Are we going to take them all as one, yes or no, kind of thing, or?
I think that question goes beyond me.
Yeah, I would say, to, to me, I mean, it comes to the totality of all of the budget cuts. It's absolutely your right to be able to pick and choose what seems appropriate and what doesn't.
If you really have a problem with it, or we can just pull that one off.
Seems like four is a big old question, Rick.
Okay, okay.
Ricky, just one thing I want to add, too, it seems like we're peppering questions at.
That's okay.
But these are the kind of minor things that we get lots of questions at.
Sure, absolutely. And our, and I'll be honest, from our office, what we try to do is, we're trying to impact students the least. We're trying to continue our programs to go as, as strong as they've been in the past with as little impact on students as possible.
And I would like, to Sarah's question, I would like to point out, just because it, it has been stricken, doesn't mean you can't revisit and say, hey, this, yes, we, and it was, again, based off of the survey results of the coaches and advisors that responded. It does not mean that that is not an area you cannot go, these are all options for you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, number five, add $20 participation fee to theater and music productions. That was from Griff Sadow. He is totally supportive of that. That is like an activity for them. So he's talking about the musicals and the plays.
So Grease, everyone who participates in Grease is going to pay a $20?
Correct, correct. Increase in speech and debate participation fees by $20. Again, we've talked to Laura and Corey Quick on that, and they were supportive of that. After-school weightlifting transfers over to community ed. We think that after-school weightlifting can be, it can be self-funded. It's a self, possible self-funded activity. People will pay, the participants will pay a fee, and then they will have the coaches. We think that the, the situation that we offer them right now, we'll talk about winter in particular, right now, we have 110 people signed up for the winter weightlifting program. We have two advisors. That is not enough. The ratio is, that, that's not a good ratio of staff to students. We don't get the biggest bang for our buck on that, but that's what we have budgeted for weightlifting advisors. We think that if they, if it goes to community ed and it becomes more self-funded, we are able to offer more staff to watch things, and basically give back to students a little bit more as far as feedback, as far as information, as far as connecting with our students.
So what will that mean to the fee for them?
It would probably mean, you're looking at a fee, right now, they pay $50, it would be probably $75.
And then how many students are lettering that that would affect?
100, probably 100 out of 110, about 90%, about 90% letter. But here's the big thing, the big push was, when, when they wanted this, we wanted to increase the amount of participation. Quite frankly, we have done that. We have increased the amount of participation. But in doing so, we've got quantity, but we don't have quality. And I think that there has to be some kind of accountability as far as the quality piece. We have a lot of young people that go up there, some work out real hard, and some just mess around. Some walk around the weight room, go down the back stairs, and they call it a day. We would like to hold kids a little bit more responsible for that.
Would this be like the Pony Power and Performance, is that what that is?
This is kind of the winter Pony Power and Performance, yes.
The winter version of that, so similar kind of program.
Correct.
Do you think lettering, taking away that, will be an issue? Do you foresee that, you know, is that a really important piece to this, do you think, for the students? Because if it moves away from community ed, they don't get to letter in it anymore, you know, how important is that to the kids, is for?
I think for some, it's very important, but here's, here again, I know that we've lost, we've lost participants in other winter sports because we offer the lettering program in weightlifting. Because I think the kids, the kids think it's an easier letter to get, rather than go through wrestling, Nordic skiing.
Right, right.
That type of thing. So there's kind of a, I will tell you this, the winter coaches are actually a little bit excited about this, because they think some of their participation numbers will go up. Brian Luke in swimming thinks that they'll probably get five or six more kids, just from that decision alone. Wrestling, they think they'll get more, for sure.
Okay.
Do you sense any pushback at all from kids? We, we did have one student who came during open forum, and she felt that the cost even out of season was a lot to ask of kids. Now, again, it wasn't like we had a great ground swell, but that was, personally, I think it's hard for a student to come and talk in open forum.
Yeah, I, I think the difficulty, the difficulty there, just like many of our things, we want to make sure that we staff the facilities properly. And in doing so, it is going to cost us money. From a community ed standpoint, they want to make sure that everything, you know, they want to make budget just like everybody else, and they want to make sure that everything is safe for the students. That if we have 100 students like we do in weightlifting, we want to make sure that it's, it's staffed properly, that it's a safe environment. And for those two advisors in weightlifting, it is very hard. I mean, they really aren't doing teaching, they're facilitating. They're going from one station to the next, and they're not really giving the students their, their due in order for input, in order for how to do a lift properly, you know? They can only scratch the surface. We think we could do a better job with students.
Slightly different related question.
Yeah.
That improves the budget because the two advisors there now then move over to?
Yes, yes, it would take that $9,000, basically, off of the books, and it becomes kind of a self-funded program.
Yeah.
Academic lettering, increase from $9 to $10. We didn't think that was going to be a problem.
Is this paying $1 for your letter, the actual letter, is that what it is?
That's the cost of the actual letter, yep. It's the cost of the letter, the numeral, and the insignia. Next one, increase fees by $70 a sport. I did touch base, touch on that one. We're looking at an increase of $70 per sport, with the exception of, later on, you're going to see hockey. Hockey's going to be a little bit different. But that being said, $20 would go to the district, $25 would go to a sports supply budget for that particular sport, and then $25 per participant for their, for a uniform budget for that particular sport.
But that's?
The idea is, the rotation of uniforms, back in the day when you and I coached, the idea is, you have a rotation of uniform renewal every three to five years, depending on the sport.
Is, is the overall cost still based on the number of weeks that a team is in season?
It is, it is, it is.
So to your knowledge, what is the lowest cost for a sport, for a kid, that we would?
Right now, tennis, easily. Tennis is the shortest season, $165.
So that it would become $235?
Correct, correct. In line, you're going to ask me the question, how does that rank in our conference? It'd be on the upper half. We'd probably be number two, behind Forest Lake. We'd be two or three, depending on the sport, behind Forest Lake and White Bear Lake. But think about this, we are the largest school in our conference, we have by far the most participants in our conference.
One, one thing, too, and maybe you know this answer, is does it alleviate some of the fundraising pressures as well?
That is the hope, that is the hope.
From those groups? Because then they have the money set aside, because you're getting it, ultimately, you're getting it in fees, but it takes a little bit off the backside of having to go and raise the money to get equipment, uniforms, that sort of thing.
Could we say that for sure?
I don't know that we can say that.
Could we set that as a goal, somehow, put that in as a caveat? I mean, I think that would resonate really well with a lot of parents.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think you'd be telling them anything that's false there. Because if you're going to cross-country, let's use cross-country, he's got 90 participants. At $20 participant, he does very little fundraising as is. They, they work events, basically, their own events. They would not have to worry about that. Plus, there are things in track, like hurdles and pits and things, that we have, we don't have enough money to replace those things. It kind of builds up a budget for him to replace some of those big items, those big ticket items. So, yes.
But this is not going to keep the Pony Touchdown Club from selling golders.
No, no, no.
Ricky, do you have any idea, youth advantage collectively, how much they provide for our kids?
I would say, in a given season, youth advantage helps us out with somewhere between 8 and 15 athletes per season, the cost.
So not a lot, and I think up to $200.
Correct, they have a cap, they have a cap.
So I, this one, I'm going to have to think more about, because I think, like, families that have more than one child who do more than one sport, we're getting up to hundreds more a year that it's going to cost some of these families, which gets to be significant.
And I think, I think from a culture standpoint, I'm going to speak from the culture standpoint, if if you take a look at the things that they do out of season with clubs, volleyball, soccer, there's no comparison. There's no comparison to the value. What we offer our student athletes during the school year is by far a better deal than what they offer in some of the clubs.
Which I totally agree, but I think when we have families that, like, they can just do it as it is, I think increasing by 70 could impact so that they won't participate.
The $25 per uniform, is that, I'm just thinking of tennis. So that just goes into their, their uniform, and it may be more expensive than the $25, and then they just pay the difference? Is that how that's?
Well, it all depends how Dave does it with tennis. If, if they decide, if they decide that they want shirts, and that's usually what they have, is, it's, it's usually a shirt. If he wants to go every other year, he's probably got enough to pay for a year. He's probably got enough money in a two-year cycle to, you know, to renew those uniforms for tennis on a, on a bi-yearly basis. As opposed to, let's say, a football. Football will probably take four or five years because they just love greater numbers. The cost is greater.
Where right now tennis, they just buy their own and they keep it.
Right now.
They do.
Yeah, yeah.
Back before you were the AD, we had a family cap. Do we not have any family cap?
We do not right now, no.
So that'd be something that we could consider, or would that be more trouble in its worth? Or do you have any?
Well, I think if you do a family cap, you're going to, you're going to decrease the amount of revenue that you gain from participation fees.
No.
I don't think there's any avoiding that.
I see, but following up on what York said, I, two sides, and I think they're very, both very important, from a coach's point of view, been there, done that, but also from a family's point of view and the kid's point of view. Because, you know, I'm, I'm so used to coaching in a rural environment and convincing farmers that they ought to let their kids go out and compete. So they feel they're making a sacrifice. City kids might be the same thing, a job after school. So that's, that's part of it as well. But I don't want to lose sight of that cost to a family, especially a large family.
Number 10 is a no-brainer. That can easily be done.
Yeah, I want to speak to that one because I know, you know, what, what you put in. To me, that's ridiculous. We see every month in the dispersment register mileage reimbursements for board members, for teachers, for principals, for administration. We expect you to be at those postseason events. If we didn't expect you to be there, if we said you have to stay home, that'd be one thing. But to expect an AD to, to be there, and I think for crowd control, it's essential, I want you to be there, and then say, but we aren't going to pay you the, you know, $30 a time or $40 a time. That's, to me, that's nonsense. And I don't want to say it's only $800 or somebody's, oh my God, is he rich? Well, it's $800, but then that would be your $800. You know, thanks for doing that, and if you want to donate 800 at the end of the year to, be nice. But I don't think we should start that philosophy for the athletic director at this time. That would be my strong opposition to that.
I agree strongly.
I'm sorry, but I don't think it's a big deal. I'm okay with it.
I'm not sure that one's...
I'm sure the next one will be fine.
That should be your choice, though, I don't, to be honest.
Number 11. Number 11 is, because hockey, if you look at the cost per participant, boys and girls, boys hockey on the boys' side for boys athletics, and girls hockey on the girls' side, those are the two highest-cost sports per athlete. We're thinking about, we'd like to propose raising those fees to $450 a participant. Right now, they sit at 280. I think, I have asked both hockey coaches this, and I took them aside and had a face-to-face meeting with them. Neither hockey coach was upset by this. And I think in their world, $450 in the hockey world is nothing for them. And that's why they did not balk at all. And again, I know you're going to have the concern about families, but you have to think about hockey families.
Oh, yeah.
And hockey families are a little bit different.
I can tell you that. Sandy, you know.
I don't know.
Oh, I thought I saw you at the hockey place one day. I, I, I would agree with that, you know, I, you don't like to, the increase, but hockey mom myself, I, thousands upon thousands of dollars a year that you're used to forking over, so, so that both coaches felt that was not too painful?
Correct, correct.
Are we in the neighborhood with the conference teams at least? I mean, I...
Oh, yes. We have three schools in the conference that are over 400 for hockey, for hockey. Hockey is just, for them, it's different. It's at a different, it's at a different scale.
Absolutely.
Do you feel 450 is the proper tipping point? Because see, one of the fears I always have on the cost of athletics does the number of kids who are able to do this. Like, I was a little disappointed when you talked about how many kids actually do Youth Advantage. Because I'm saying, oh, boy, do we have invisible group out there who, they just don't go down that road because they've seen the cost. And, and I'm not immune to this. I can remember writing out the first check for a pair of soccer socks for my daughter, and until my son and daughter finished school, there were lots of checks for lots of things. And, and okay, I can live that, but I, I could afford that. And I, I'm very sensitive to kids who can't.
Yeah.
Hockey is a have-and-have-not sport, unfortunately, it just is. There is another program, St. Mary's Point, Point Hockey, and you know about Point, and they're specifically developed as a less expensive option, but the nature of the, the sport, unfortunately, is it's, it's expensive. It's a very expensive sport, so.
You ask about tipping point. Where we got $450, we actually talked to Lakeville, I talked to the Lakeville South and Lakeville North ADs. A while back, a few years ago, maybe five or six years ago, you remember that Lakeville tried to do cost-neutral sport fees for all their sports? And gymnastics was one where they went to $600. Hockey was 580. The tipping point would probably be above $500. That's kind of the tipping point, I think.
Did you say comparatively where we are in hockey with 450 compared to the other districts?
There are three, in our conference, there are three schools at 400 or above for hockey.
Okay. Did you say they tried to do that, Lakeville?
No, they did for one year. They did it for one year, and then all chaos came back.
Okay.
Yep.
I was curious.
Yep.
I think it's crossed off at the bottom.
Increase hoc, eliminate the advisor position for clubs that do not have at least 12 paid members. This would include one club that we have in the fall, and that is Fall Dance. That's where the 1,700 comes from. Fall Dance has, has been under 12 participants for the last three years. We still offer competitive dance in the winter, so we offer a dance alternative, we offer a dance program, and it does nothing that tips Title IX numbers.
Is this Chevilles, or is that a different thing?
This is Fall Chevilles. Yep. And their performance is during halftime of the football games.
So it, it's kind of my understanding that they're trying to bring that program back up to, back up to snuff, kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah.
So is there something to be said for giving that a little bit more time to try to see if we can get those numbers up above 12? I mean, at one point in history, I think there were over 60 or 50 or 60 people on that team.
I've never, I've never experienced more than 30 for competitive dance. For Fall Dance, there, in my beginning years, they were at 40, probably 40. It's, it's one of those things that, right now, it's just not a popular option with the girls.
Is cheerleading, that's one that's growing, however, is that?
That's VA.
Cheerleading goes through VA.
That is not us.
Really?
That's an independent provider.
So would that be an option for Chevilles, too?
Pardon?
Would that be an option for Chevilles, too?
Possibly.
Will we run it through community ed?
Possibly.
I mean, if we're going to run, what was the other thing we were going to move to?
Weightlifting.
Weightlifting. I mean, is Chevilles something that might do better in community ed?
Possibly. I think the difficulty is finding coaches. That, dance coaches are hard to come by. We're very fortunate, we're very fortunate that we found a young, enthusiastic, energy, energetic, young coach who our numbers are, are strong, and hopefully, we're very young. Hopefully, we can kind of rebuild that. We're, we're definitely a step in the right direction.
How many are on it now?
16, 16.
So then it isn't, it wouldn't affect the Chevilles, the fall?
It would, it would not...
If they stayed about 12?
It would not affect the competitive season.
Okay.
But it would...
Just the fall?
Just fall, just fall. It's not touching...
Unless they could get above 12.
The winter season.
They have to get above 12?
Correct.
That's fair.
Restructure price for all clubs and fine arts to $75 each. Currently, there is a $100 cap, and you can kind of do art club, physics club, all those different clubs at the same time, whether you do one or five of them. Because they all have paid advisors to them, we're suggesting that it's $75 per activity. Now, one of the reasons that the, that the advisors like this is because it puts more skin in the game for the participants. They come, they attend more often. Because they have money tied to it, we'll see an increase in improvement in attendance to run the club. Right now, it's kind of hit or miss on attendance. Art club will have as many as 24, as few as three. We think that if you tie a fee to it, that's going to be more consistent with the numbers.
So how is that different from what's at number four? Would those clubs, because you said those will be about 20, so, but then Ricky?
Those are truly interest clubs. They are clubs that, they're serving an interest, a student body, student population has an interest in that group, they have a paid advisor, they're not doing community service, they're taking up an after-school classroom and things like that, they're meeting on their own time, and it's more of a, you could argue it's more of a choice thing. They've chosen to be in that activity.
Like GSA?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, National Honor Society has to do service, they have a service...
That is part of one of their criteria, yes, yes. They have hours that they have to put in. Capping entry fees for sports at $600 per season. When they enter a tournament, they have to pay a fee. So track, every time they go to an invitational, cross-country, when they go to an invitational, they pay an entry fee. What we're thinking about is capping those entry fees to $600. It would basically allow for four invitationals, and if you go beyond four, then you're going to have to pick that up through fundraising dollars.
So who would this affect and how much?
Who would it affect? Alpine skiing the most is by far the most with fees. Because they have to pay for their lift tickets at a, at a tournament, at an invitational. They have to pay for their lift tickets and an entry fee. When they go to Buck Hill, Buck Hill is probably $1,300 for varsity and JV, just for that one invitational.
The entry fee is 1,300?
Yes.
Ricky, I was...
And part of it is because our numbers are great. I mean, we have, while other schools might have 15 alpine skiers, we have 50. And we, again, we don't want to, we don't want to limit the amount of participation for our students.
What struck me today as I was looking at dispersments and for an entry fee for a wrestling tournament, Holman, Wisconsin.
Yeah.
The entry fee was 300 bucks. Now, that means that if this were the case, you could only go to one other tournament.
But if you look at the supply budget, they will have the option to use some of their supply money for entry fees for invitationals. Alpine skiing is a perfect example. They aren't going to have a lot in uniforms because each skier kind of wants to, they, they like to brand themselves. That's, that's just how the world of Alpine is. You take that money that's collected, and they will use it toward their invitational entry fees.
So are track meets considered an invitational?
Yeah. Not, not duels, not conference things, those are not invitationals, but if they go to Edina, yes, that's an invitational. It's probably anywhere from 110 to a lower-level meet to 150 on a varsity meet.
Which it seems like they do a lot of track meet.
They do.
So it could really affect some of our sports.
I don't think as much as you think, because their entry fees aren't as much. Cross-country, their entry fees are, are small for a team. $75 per invitational.
So Ricky, tell me, was Holman, that $300, I realize it was a by-state tournament, and some of those are, is that unusually high? You know, I go back to the day when they had about $50.
Not for, not for that one, because that's a, that's a major invitational. It's, it's probably the second or third biggest invitational in wrestling in the United States.
Rochester might be.
The Big Red, or Red, Rumble on the Red, or whatever that is.
Yeah, yeah.
Eliminate meal money for state tournament teams and individuals. Right now, we give them $7.50 a day. Coaches felt, you know what, that, that's, that's very expendable. I mean, the, the kids go out and eat with themselves, the teams eat as a team, that to them was nothing. Meal money was, state tournament meal money was nothing.
So another remedy here, give them enough so they can really eat a meal.
Yeah, right now at 7:50, it'd be tough to buy a happy meal, or not a happy meal, but a value meal at McDonald's.
Wrestlers don't eat.
Yeah, wrestlers don't eat.
And wrestlers don't eat.
It depends if the tournament's over, carrots, grapes.
Anything before the tournament, carrots, grapes, vegetables.
There, I could give you my diet list. So I'm saying, I'm saying on that one, I think what the board seriously should consider, they're either raise the amount so it's realistic, or eliminate it entirely. That's kind of what you're at.
Yep. As you look at the, the line-struck items, the number 16, kind of speaks to what you talked about, Shelley, capping. Right now, we have third sport is $75. It's to kind of, we want to, we want to support the notion of three-sport athletes. So we give them a break on the third sport to $75. The coaches were strongly, strongly opposed to eliminating the third-sport discount. They wanted, they want to try to promote sports and three-sport athletes as much as possible. Captain's patches, we're surprised by that one. The captain's patches that we have, we, we said, you know, have the captains pay for the patches because they're about 13, they're about $14 apiece. The coaches were strongly against that. I was surprised. I thought, that's probably a no-brainer, but I was wrong on that one. The senior citizens charge, charge them $15 a year as opposed to giving them the free pass. Quite frankly, politically, it's probably better to keep that as a free option.
Do they know, do senior citizens know that this is an option for them?
I don't think all don't, no. I don't, I think some know.
We have quite a few that write them every year, and the way that they are now is once you get one, you can have it and use it over and over again, so they are pretty popular and...
Is it communicated, or is it just like you know, you kind of have to know that it's an option?
I think it's on the website, isn't it?
Yeah, it's out there. We could probably promote it more. I mean, now that you say that, I can put it in the next community newsletter for sure, so we can put it back out there again if that's something that you'd like to do, or...
Like be good to do that every year, like in the fall, beginning of the school year, you know, sports events, whatever, come on out, see a game.
There is, there is a lot of word of mouth, though, because we get people who constantly, I mean, I've had people come up and say, I just had my birthday, I'm a senior, can I get my pass? They're excited about it.
Oh, that's good.
I know this, that when I work the ticket booth at the fine arts, the music concerts, and if I see somebody that writes a check and they've got, they're a senior citizen in, in the ledger, they're a Stillwater account, I always refer them to come up here and get the pass.
So even for concerts?
Yes, yes. By far, they're used more at concerts than anything else.
Well, and I think you've got to look at this one. Hey, you might get $15 you save, but you lose it in that tie-in of people to the district.
And I think that's what the coaches and advisors felt on that one. Again, they, they thought that's, that's more of a political suicide.
Well, look how much you've gained because of the pony center and senior citizens using that walking... that walking track and that facility. That's them, and so, boy, this would strike me as in that same alignment.
Reduce the number of contests, lower-level contests, JV, B nine. Of course, the coaches were against that. They don't want to take away from opportunities for student athletes. Eliminate all youth parent and food shelf nights. Good point was made by a couple coaches. Some of our sports don't have those things, so it doesn't affect us. So when it comes to voting or filling out the survey for that, if I coach cross-country, I don't have a youth night. Why not? I'll just vote no. Yeah, let's strongly consider cutting it. So I, I think in looking back on that one, that's something that we, they, they didn't want that one to go through. Eliminate nine-B and ten-B contests. Currently, in some sports, we have a nine-B level of competition, basketball and football. We have a ten-B level of competition, football and baseball. Coaches did not want to eliminate that.
Explain a little bit more what that is.
A nine-B and a ten-B? Okay, so if you have a ninth grade, in order to keep more-
Kids involved.
Kids involved, we will have a ninth grade, like basketball, we will have a ninth-grade A team and a ninth-grade B.
Ninth grade team.
And we will have, right now, for basketball, for boys' basketball, we have thirteen games for the nine-B, and those nine-B players will also be at all the nine-A games. So we have hit kind of the maximum of twenty-six nine-A games, where they, there might be games where those kids don't get in, but they will get in on those nine-B games. So again, we're trying to offer as many opportunities for student athletes as possible.
You could almost put it under, that's another form of Henry Merle's.
Yep. Well-
In a way.
For some, yes.
Yeah, because you're allowing kids who love to play basketball, but maybe aren't particularly good at basketball, to keep going.
Yep. But again, you're, you're trying to develop, and especially, you know, you might, your top five, you may not miss on, but six through ten, it's a little bit different. You don't want to, you don't want to lose some of those kids, you want them to be involved as much as possible, because you don't know how young people will develop.
You bet.
And when we run our nine-B and nine-A for basketball, they will run simultaneously on court, in the pack, Court Seven and Court Six, with their own set of officials and everything. It's really a good thing. Five of our schools in our conference participate that way, four do not.
It could be, it's not that they're not good, but the competition, because so many of their peers started when they were four, five, and six.
Right.
They're just not at that level.
Correct, correct. And some of them, at some of the schools, their philosophy is, we want to get the number down. We want our ninth grade to be at ten, and that's how many we're going to carry. We aren't like that. Because we're a big school, one of the things that we pride ourselves is offering as many opportunities to students as possible. So it means that our rosters are a little bit bigger.
It's a good thing.
Can we go back to the one before that?
Yes.
Eliminate the youth parent and food shelf nights for admission?
Yep.
So when I go back and look at the actual survey results?
Yep.
It's fifteen percent strongly agree.
Yep.
Forty percent would consider as an idea, and forty-five percent strongly disagree.
Correct.
So the total amount that would consider as an idea or strongly agree is actually fifty-five percent.
Correct, and that's below our seventy.
And it says to get free admission.
Yep.
Would there be a way to soften that, to say, "Let's just do the food shelf one, and you get a dollar off your admission if you bring a can," or something like that?
Possibility.
You know, and then it, then it, then we, and eliminate the other ones, you know, it's maybe not quite the same amount of savings or whatever, but we still, it seems like there would be some support for looking at that. Could we possibly throw that one back in there?
We can throw it back in, and we can adjust it. Yeah. I think their thing was, the youth and parent nights were kind of a big thing for them.
That is a big deal.
And again, the number of sports that you have youth and parent nights, you got the two hockey's, the two soccer's, the football, the volleyball, anything with a paid attendance, a paid gate. It's less than, it's less than half of our sports that are affected by that.
Okay, so of all the people surveying, most of them are probably going to be like, "Isn't really affecting, so it doesn't matter."
And I think that's when we're parents fork over a lot of money, as we've said, and to give them one.
Yep, you give them one freebie.
Yeah.
That's kind of a carrot.
That's true.
Reduce the number of coaches on staff. You could imagine this one went over like a lead balloon. Our, our proposal was, however many levels you have, with the exception of football, because that's a safety issue. With the exception of football, the number of levels that you have, that's the number of paid coaches you are offered in the program. So hockey, right now, hockey currently has three paid coaches for two levels, varsity and junior varsity. It would eliminate a coach at both boys' and girls' hockey, and down the line for some of those sports. Soccer would go from five to four on the boys' and girls' side. Gymnastics would go from three to two. So that's how we came up with that.
Not to pick on football, because I enjoy going to games.
Yep.
I think twenty-two maybe is the number of coaches that they had this year.
But they're not paid by the district. They are fundraised, a lot of those are fundraised.
So how many are paid by the district?
You have six for the varsity JV, you have three paid for the sophomores, and then you have five for the ninth grade, because ninth grade has two teams.
And do you know our total number?
Of participants? About a hundred and fifty.
It seems really excessive when you look at, I'm glad to know that some are not paid by the district, but it was like twenty-two coaches with, you know, almost the same number of participants as tennis, but a lot of difference in coaches.
Ricky, isn't there a safety issue, though, in gymnastics?
Absolutely, and in hockey. Anything that you have a contact board, it's a safety issue.
What, so to tennis, what would be, I mean, he has fifty million kids, and it's Dave and Jay and Tom.
So I think that would stay, because we have eight levels.
So that would stay, yeah, not, not fifty million, eighty-two, but-
Right, they would stay with three, right, because they have three levels.
Correct, correct.
So that would stay. That would stay, that would stay the same, then?
Correct, correct.
So technically, the way football is looked at beyond required, those others are volunteer coaches.
They're not volunteers, they get paid through fundraising dollars. So those pony cards that they sell, a lot of that money goes into sellers.
But what I'm also looking at, and, and again, I don't know what the school's policy or if there is one on it, for example, if there are coaches who have abilities and talents who want to come on a regular basis and help out, that's really up to the head coach.
We have, yeah, and we have that in, in many sports, actually, with us. We're fortunate that we have a lot of people interested in giving back to our community, but they have to go through the background check. Football, I think, has two. They have two that just do it for fun.
Wrestling would be pretty common.
Wrestling has five volunteer coaches, and part of their thing is, they can only come for a day or two a week.
Yeah.
Because of their schedules. Yep. Eliminate dome rental, we talked about that a little bit. And then the twenty-fourth idea was charge participants seventy percent of the sport cost per athlete. That would get a little bit complex, and if you don't like high fees, if we went seventy percent of the cost per athlete, that would make the fees astronomical, and we would be by far the highest score, paying fees in our conference.
Now, the ones that are here, did some of these, did they all originate from the activities or sports people?
Yes, yes. And, and the music advisors and fine arts people. Like the twenty-dollar fee for the drama and plays, that was strictly from the drama advisor, from GRIF.
Can I, can I just go back to number six?
Yeah.
So Ricky, I feel like, so, so they were on board with that? I, I feel like we've heard here and there that speech and debate really seemed to really pay a lot and feel underfunded, and so I'm just curious, they were on board with that as a solution, or?
Yes, yes. Laura and Cory?
Yeah.
And, and we kind of, whether you can say, we kind of loaded the deck. We said, we lumped them in with Minnesota State High School League sports.
Okay.
Okay, because that's what they are. They are a Minnesota State High School League activity. They have a state tournament, they have a section tournament, they have all of those things that all the sports have. And they don't have a uniform fee, and arguably, they don't have a supply budget that they have. So that's why it was only twenty dollars. It was basically the same twenty dollars that if you look at the seventy-dollar fee hike that we're proposing, or that's being proposed.
Okay.
It's, it's along that line. It's, it's just like them.
So what has it been?
What has it been for them? One fifty. Speech and debate are one fifty.
Okay, and speech, that's same as forensics in this case?
Correct, correct. I think one of the things that we've done with speech and debate that I think Lauren, Cory are, are happy with, it's come to our department, it's not part of the school budget, so we're able to help them with, they have the opportunity to fundraise. So when they do their tournament, that is a fundraising opportunity for them. They can make, they make about four thousand dollars off there.
That's great. Is that new this year, or is that-
New last year, new last year.
Okay, that's nice.
Yep.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay.
One more question, but really quick. The number three, the increased concert tickets, eight dollars and six dollars, is that the student? The six dollars, is that student?
Six dollars would be students and senior citizens.
Okay.
Currently, it's seven and five.
And will you still have a maximum for a family? Like, I know when you buy five tickets?
If you're in band, he still has his maximum of eight for twenty-five. We'll probably talk to Dennis about that a little bit.
Would it be appropriate to go straight up to ten?
What?
Would it be appropriate to go straight up to ten? Like, do ten and five or something, instead of eight? I don't know why, it just seems, but that's a lot of, a lot of, you push back.
Yeah, I-
I base stuffs on that, I think.
Ten is pretty big. I mean, ten, they're going to push back and say, "You're, you're going to give me a forty percent hike over last year?"
I just seems like I remember being in, in theater myself in high school, and it was, I think our tickets were eight dollars then.
But, but you know what? Theater is different. If you go to GRIF, GRIF is ten dollars for theater. So the theater prices are ten, eight, and six. Ten dollars for adults, eight dollars for seniors, six dollars for students.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, community, it's eighteen dollars for a show.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I, I realize you don't want to make too big of a jump, but it does feel like a really good deal, I think, but.
Which I think it is, but I think we're asking parents, again, paying that, and siblings, like, we live, the other kids at home, not where we would have brought them before, because sister, yes.
Pray for graduation.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ricky.
Sorry, I took up a lot of time.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anybody miss my points?
All right, we are going to, we have Paul Lee and George Nolan here to talk to you about the ALC, and we have information that they have for you, so they're going to do it. Paul, what should you take away from it?
All right. Well, first of all, thank you for having us, George and I, to talk about the ALC and share some information that we had gathered. But just to start, just for formalities, I'm Paul Lee, and I'm the Director of Student Support Services.
George Nolan, Director of Specialized Learning.
And so, thank you. So what we're here today to talk to you about, and you have the document, I see, is the Sangre Valley Area Learning Center. And like all ALCs that you'll find throughout the state, our ALC, as well as others, are really designed as an alternative program for students that have fallen into a level where they've fallen behind in credits, there are students that are oftentimes at risk of not graduating, and have experienced different challenges in their lives and in their educational progress that has kind of held them back a bit. And, and it, it's a, it's a switch from, and many of you know our ALC well, but where, where you really look at having a smaller classroom setting, more flexible learning environments, and that sort of thing, as far as how an ALC functions. The purpose for our time together is to really do an overview of kind of enrollment trends, look at the students that are served currently, and some historical data regarding the ALC, some comparison data that we've gathered from other ALCs and around the, around the east metro area. We're going to look a little bit at what are some of the key characteristics of, of effective and strong ALC programs, and then we'll, we'll also have an opportunity to share a few ALC, different, different models of how an ALC can function for you to consider with that. But what I'd like to mention upfront, though, is, you know, like any educational program, the ALC is a complex and dynamic system, and we acknowledge that the information we're going to be sharing today is, is just the highlights of a lot of that information, things that we think might be helpful for you as you're looking at programs throughout the district, and how they function, and how they're used by our students. So, and as we go through, we'll share some time between the two of us, and happy to answer any questions that you have. But again, it's kind of a summary of data. So we'll start on page one, the first page here, and what you're going to see here is so a chart with data that talks about enrollment. It goes back nine years, or starts in the, in the year 2009, and you'll see, just to orient yourself to that graph, to the chart, it shows both an October one enrollment, and then a May second enrollment for that academic year, because there is, a part of an ALC is a lot of change. We have students that graduate mid-year, and that sort of thing. So it's, it's kind of an interesting to look at, the change that happens within an academic year, and you'll see across the front, the, the grade levels that are supported through the ALC. The last, second to last column is what we're going to, we're going to call twelve-plus. For simplistic sake, we'll probably try to reference it as that moving forward. But those are students that have gone beyond their, what would be their typical four-year graduation date. So when you, you know, come in, and if your, if your graduation date would be 2024, that's, these are students that have gone now beyond that graduation date for them.
Is that a different group of transitions, or is that-
Absolutely different, yep. So transition students are students that have disabilities that, that require additional specialized instruction and support in the areas of transition to kind of bridge themselves into adult life. And so that's a much different program.
So those could be living skills, or they could be work?
Vocational skills, independent living skills, and post-secondary skills.
So can you just explain what, a little bit more than, because I actually don't know, what, what qualifies for a student who, tell me a little bit about more of what that twelve plus looks like? Why can they keep staying here after, I mean, what's the rule about that?
Right, right. Well, the, in the ALC, these are students that are typically don't have disabilities. There's no, that's not a criteria in the ALC.
Don't have an IEP.
Now, some do.
Some do, but typically they don't.
Right. And so, and so at twelve-plus-
A lot of the students at twelve-plus are just kids, there might be some kids who might transfer in. There are also kids who just, you know, have taken a break or from schooling and maybe are not-
Like a gap year kind of thing?
Yeah, and then they want to say, you know, all of a sudden, they want to just get their, you know, graduate and get their credits caught up. So a lot of times, kids will take that extended time. And you'll see, when we talk about this, we do fairly well with this, this group in comparison, in regards to the twelve-plus students. But I think there's been some instructional, or not instructional, but some systemic adjustments that I think you might see that number go down a little bit more with our bar program with ninth grades, so then you're able to capture kids a little bit earlier in regards to their credit.
So was there an age limit to, what, when, I mean, can kids just be in an ALC program indefinitely, or up to twenty-one?
Yeah. As far as getting funding from the state.
Isn't that the special ed requirement, twenty-one?
That's true for specialized students as well.
Yeah. But that's a requirement for all kids?
Well, I believe that we can, you can up to twenty-one.
Obtain revenue if they have a revenue.
Okay.
It's funded differently, and it's funded, ALC, I, a lot of that is a, is a whole different conversation, but the ALC program generates, in our model, a seat-based revenue. So we get, if you look on an attendance report, you'll see students that were there, their attendance, and then you'll see a multiplier of what one-point-two of that average daily attendance ends up being. And so there's a multiplication factor that you get for the ALC. However, not all of those kids are there all day, every day. Look at that.
So they generate the same revenue as a high school kid unless the high school kid, that, that student happens to go extended day?
that that student happens to go extended day, of which then, you know, you only get a certain fraction of their revenue if they're if they're doing it as additional credits. That could be, you know, like a credit recovery, so they attend the regular day and then they do credit recovery. That's a little bit different formula. And then it comes down to the membership. How many days are they actually a student in the ALC?
So it's not like it's their coming grad days?
In some cases, it could be.
It could be.
That gets to be the complicating factor with ALC programming, is it it works entirely differently than the typical day and the typical student attendance?
Yeah. What Kristen touched on, and that's important, and I know what you're talking about, do they actually have to show up?
So if it's because it's based on, because it's seat-based.
Yes.
If they are not members, meaning they don't show up for fifteen days in a row, then they're dropped as a member of our student population, and we do not receive funding. So they need to show up, but, I mean, there's attendance where they, you know, they can miss days, but if it's fifteen consecutive days, they get dropped from the roster, and then we don't receive funding.
Okay, but it's gotta hit that fifteen.
It does.
See, there are some states, some districts who were fun, and I'm not talking about Minnesota, who are funded on actually showing up, and it's a whole different premise.
But all other things being equal, it's one point two, maybe?
Same as, it's a secondary math, it's one point two of the gen ed formula and other things, so that it's the same weight as anybody seven through twelve would receive. Okay.
Two questions I have, and maybe you're gonna get to it, and just tell me that, is, I'm I'm always, when I look at ALCs, what's the goal? It seems to me they can be one of two things. The goal is GED, get equivalency, especially for kids who are chronologically, they've moved way along, but credit-wise, you know, very, very deficient, you know? They gotta stay around for a long time. And then the other I'm looking at, is it to get credits for graduation that they're lacking?
I think it's really primarily the second.
Yeah.
GED is really a different program.
I see a head nodding in the back, so I think that's the case.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yep. So if we maybe reference to page two, just gonna point out a couple of things from the enrollment data. One thing that you'll see is that kind of overall, the enrollment has decreased by about forty percent from the fall of two thousand nine to the fall of two thousand eighteen. There's various reasons for that, but you'll see that 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 pattern. What you also see is this twelve-plus group that we talked about. We typically see, when we kind of look at the data, that they typically decrease about fifty percent from fall to spring of each year, and that's, you know, certainly due to many of them graduate. They're, you know, they're finishing up their credits, they're getting those things done. So when you look at this kind of visual graphic in the middle of the page, you can kind of see the enrollments as, that are in the the table above, but it's broken down by grade level, and you can kind of see that pattern where, you know, from the October to May, kind of in the orange, you typically see that nice reduction, because again, those senior, those twelve-plus students are are graduating. And then most years, you see the enrollment increasing from October to May, you know, in tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade. And that's just, those are when students are entering into the ALC throughout the year. And so again, so you just see that increase there. So to to move on, there's another, around this enrollment piece, there's a a couple factors that are really important to note, and there's been three major events, at least in the last nine years, that have really impacted the ALC. First is, you'll see in in the year two thousand fourteen, fifteen, and in the chart, there's a little asterisk on that year, but that's the year in which we, the district had nine sixteen, intermediate service district nine sixteen, came into the district and ran our ALC at its, where it had been located, over over in the Zinta by the west, what we used to call West Campus. They came in and provided the administration and a lead teacher, part-time administration lead teacher, and ran our ALC for that one year. It was during that year is when the ALC changed from an independent study-based program to a seat-based program. And then, and we've kind of talked a little bit about the funding on that, and the real, the moving to a seat-based program was a a cost-effective, a efficient way or cost-saving measure to bring in actually more revenue than what the independent model does.
But was it requi, is it a requirement now to have a seat-based model, or could we go to an independent?
You have to get permission from MDE to do.
Independent?
Yep, the independent piece.
But you can't do it, you just have to get permission?
We have permission.
Yep. We have permission.
So I remember some of those conversations, 'cause I remember, I think it was Dr. Kilpatrick Dunn.
Oh, yes, Dr. Dunn.
When, 'cause I think they were told, okay, fine, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think the amount was. And I just remember hearing anecdotally that some of the numbers that were being used by the district at that time, they, I don't think they had necessarily consensus on. And so the impact was much greater in terms of what the ALC really lost in terms of of funding. And then, and I know we brought this up before, but just that, that notion that is the philosophy for the ALC to be a revenue generator, or is it to truly offer them, each student, the the space and the support that they need to be able to, you know, get their credits and and graduate? And that it sounded like, I mean, I just remember talking to some students and some teachers, that it sounded like when it moved from the independent study model to a seat-based model, it was replicating some of the the system in which those students were successful, being at high school. And so that they lost some agency and autonomy over that in terms of what the students were able, how they were able to obtain their credits. Now, again, this is just anecdotally, but, so it'd be interesting to see if we, so what's the downside of going back to the independent?
One of the reasons, and I won't, obviously, won't speak up to the programmatic side, one of the reasons that we moved away at that time, or it was explained of why we moved away at that time, was because you staff, even though it's not, none of this, none of our programming is supposed to be revenue generation, but when you're staffing, and you have to have that staff there every day from, you know, seven twenty-five or seven o'clock until what have you, that's your expense. I mean, you just pay for that for the year. With the the credit model, where you were receiving payment based on the the credits kids receive, if they chose not to give, put their best effort forward, and it took them, either they didn't show, or it took them multiple times to receive credit, you were essentially providing a significant amount of opportunity which wasn't being utilized and wasn't being funded at all. At least with the seat-based model, you're getting paid some for them being present in the room, as opposed to them not showing up at all, not passing a credit, and now you're paying for instruction, and nothing is coming of it. That essentially, I remember being a very core component of why we switched.
Unfortunately, that was a similar time when you were faced with crunch for a deficit, and you were trying to look for places to make it. I don't think, in terms of preparing kids, instructors, parents for the change, much time was allotted for that. I remember it as a more of a frenzy, it's a quick fix.
It came quick.
And unfortunately, lots of these kids were victimized, and even the role of nine sixteen, I think at that time, it was not something they looked forward to and said, gee, can we help you out? We kind of begged them to come in and and provide something. And so that it was less preparation time normally than normally you would've taken.
I think we had a couple of leadership changeovers, because that all happened right the year before I came, and one of the things, I mean, right away when I came, it was the displeasure with nine sixteen, and what I've shared with our teachers and others is, you know, that wasn't a fair shot for nine sixteen, because nine sixteen does great work with, for most other districts. And so it was a combination, I think, of exactly what you said, might not the preparation, not the why, and and so that first year was not very successful as far as how kids and teachers were.
And I think Kristen said it well, you know, if you're a little bit more blunt, there was almost a lax, not enough pressure on kids. And there, let's face it, part of the education, sometimes there is pressure to move along, to succeed, to cajole them to pull out sometimes the best. And and for many, that was missing. But in fairness to the kids and the families, the problem, it was so abrupt and so short notice. And and Paula, you're correct, too. Part of the motivation was financial, and because of the financial needs at that time.
Can you say or repeat why it moved, why we had that just one year, nine sixteen? What was, why was it only one year that it was nine sixteen and then went back? You may have already said it, but.
Well.
We just didn't, we just said, we don't like it, we're moving back, or?
Yeah, actually, before, I'm trying to think who is the, I don't know who the person was there before, Mary. When we first came. Oh, yeah.
It was Dawn, and then it was Kristen.
Just from nine sixteen.
Kristen from nine sixteen, and then it became Mary.
Yeah, and I can't remember if it was nine sixteen that Kristen was moving on, I can't remember exactly why, but then we asked Mary, the teacher, to take over. It was not successful that first year, and, you know, so we asked one of our administrators to take over. I think that was actually, though, before we came, because I don't remember meeting Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Can you define what you mean by not successful?
It happened before we came on.
I know. Do you, does anyone have any idea? I'm just trying to, you know, this is a really big issue.
Well, I think when I, I went and met with the teachers when I first, that spring, before I actually started, and the conversation that they had shared is just, you know, the whole, moving to that seat-based time was hard, and that that's an accountability piece, right? It's sometimes that, to what Paula had said, it 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 limits some of the independence of what that is, because you're required to be there to show up and be doing the work. And I also think we had a half-time person there from nine sixteen, now we have a full-time person there.
Okay.
We needed more support to really figure out kind of what was going on there, so.
Okay.
We got some newer teachers, some of the longtime teachers were upset that we were moving away from that independent.
Okay.
Program, they left.
Okay.
It, I would say that year was kind of a hullabaloo.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So what I'm curious on, no, is describe more philosophically, what is the ALC supposed to provide that the regular high school does not?
Yeah, yeah, I could. George is gonna touch on that.
I could touch on that, but I think some really key components of the program is, it's it's so strong relationship-based with kids, and it's really geared into providing individual flexible learning options for kids, I think, and once I get it, kind of get into some of the feedback we got from not only our students and teachers, the common themes that you will hear is, is that, you know, pacing was a little bit quicker for those kids, giving class sizes, being able to have and capture some of that more individualized attention and flexibility in their learning. The ALC, in my experience being here for, going on year two, is that it's so student-centered, it's really student-centered, it's really focusing on relationships, and the whole child, you know, looking at very various issues, because kids, as most, some of our kids, they bring some really stressful situations into their learning environment, so the pace is slower, the relationships are there, and then you'll see kids kind of responding more, you know, more fluid with that, with that piece.
Maybe we could, could we?
Get back and move on.
Yeah.
I think many of your questions they have, they need to be answered.
Yeah. So I'll just talk a little bit more about the the timelining piece. One of the the components I just mentioned here is that that same year in which nine sixteen took over for that one year, that was the year in which, you might remember that the tenth-grade academy started at Stilwetter High School, and that's an idea, that that academy was built to support those students that were at risk of, you know, falling behind or or skill development, and was a very focused way to try to get them a strong start into the high school. And that's been a a good, strong program. The the big, now, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, big changes in the district. That's the year in which the ALC moved to the high school. The high school became a nine through twelve school, as we know. We moved to a middle school model with those pieces. So that has a significant impact and and on the programming. One of the other, one of the things with that is the the middle school model, having houses, developing the developmental design programming, those were things at that middle level where we know kids start falling behind. Those are some of those things that the district did and has done to really support those kids, to really change the way in which middle school experience is, and to really support those kids. That's always our our hope, and we know from, you know, from research and things like that, kids in the least restrictive environment or in the most typical environments that meet their needs is is the best environment for their learning. So so again, those enhancements that happen at that middle level are very important to supporting kids that have, that are at risk, and at risk of falling behind. Another addition at that time was the, for example, the high school bar program. So when the ninth graders were brought up, they developed that bar program. So again, there's been a lot of these other programs as well that are really focused on meeting the needs of individually, meeting the needs of kids and helping them so that they don't fall behind, and we're catching those. We're hoping, again, that, you know, in theory, you would wanna see that the amount of kids that need, like, an ALC programming decrease because they're getting what they need at a younger age. That's always the hope. We're always gonna have a need for kids to be able to access an ALC program within our district, in my opinion, at least.
Do you say it's too simple for us to know?
Other than that, those things are really.
Well.
We need a few more years to figure out.
Yeah. Yeah. And I could talk a little bit more eventually, but.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Usually, when you are having more of a team model in the middle school and then the ninth grade, in theory, you will be able to, and I know Katie over at the high school is being really relentless in trying to make sure kids don't fall behind.
Mm-hmm.
And with that being said, hopefully, the goal is, is that our group, four-year graduation rates will go up even more, and then, in regards to the long pieces, we won't have as many kids in the twelve, twelve, I mean, in the twelve-plus.
Mm-hmm.
Right, yeah.
Cool.
So just to move into a little bit of some of the different things, if you turn to page three, kind of get into the twelve-plus, and Paul kind of touched on some pieces to it earlier, where at the beginning of the October count, we have more kids, twelve-plus kids, and then as, you know, as they move through the year in May, and a lot of them are graduating and moving on and are discontinuing, I can go through that, but as you see, the numbers tend to go down, two thousand ten, eleven, all the way through, you start to see. And what we've seen the last, you know, three years consistently has gone down a little bit in regards to our our numbers in twelve-plus, but the ALC provides educational services for students who have completed their twelfth grade year and have not earned enough credits required to graduate. The number of twelve-plus students served consistently decreases throughout the academic year as a result of students graduating or choosing to discontinue attending the ALC program.
This is related to one of the outcomes from the S report we just received at the last coordinating, correct? That this is a component, that twelve-plus graduation, or graduation rate, right? Are we trying to get that down to as close to zero as possible, that we don't have kids past twelfth grade?
Yeah, that's, that's always our goal, yeah.
Right.
To do that. And again, this is, you know, this is, the reason why I think this is highlighted is it's really unique to the ALC. There's really, you know, very little other programming available to students that, you know, beyond their senior year, you could go a GED route, but.
Right.
So this is that, that unique side of that, and I think a very positive piece to this.
Okay.
And then, this is our ALC graduation rates from two thousand thirteen to two thousand As you see, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, the four-year graduate, graduation rate speaks for itself. As you see, 2012, 2013, the four-year graduate, graduation rate speaks for itself, 52.6. And then the next year, 52.7, and then obviously, 2014, 15, I think that's when.
That's the nine sixteen year.
That's, that's the nine sixteen year. And then 2015, 16, up to 47.8, and then 2016, 17, 50 percent. And then again, as you can see, as kids spend a little bit longer with us, they tend to, five-year, six-year graduation rates go up. Average four-year graduation rate over the five, the past five years have been relatively consistent at approximately about 50 percent. The majority of students entering the ALC during the 11th or 12th grade year as a result of falling behind on credits. The average five-year graduation rate of 71 percent and six-year graduation rate of 76 percent indicate a significant increase in graduation rate.
All right. One, one question though, that you always have, and again, what you almost have to do is look at the chart on top and superimpose it down below. And, and the reason I say that is these are percentages, but percentages of what? It always relates to how many kids you're talking about. Graduation rates even nationally are always very, very complex because all states count them different. And even despite attempts to say, uniform this, because especially when you talk about ALC kid, when am I an ALC kid? Is that from day one? Are we counting those? Or are we counting the kids who started in 10th grade or 11th grade or 12th grade? In past experience, kids do that in most ALCs. So I'm saying, boy, it's hard to generalize on that ALC graduation in its own context as a separate rather than that.
It might be helpful to, to go back and forth on that, to assume May and October actually counts as you process through that piece of it, by grade level, to get a, get a picture of what the percentages might be made up of.
Paula, George, I'm so sorry, I have to get back to work, but if I could follow up with you. I'll check in with Chair Pelletier, but, okay, thank you.
I'm gonna forget this if I don't ask it. Do we still have a 10th grade academy?
One more year.
Okay, and 9th grade academy is essentially the bar program?
All right, so let's, we'll kind of continue through and on page four, what we did is we looked at some comparison districts, and this is kind of a typical kind of study approach when you, you want to look at, how do things kind of balance out with kind of neighboring programs? What we, what we looked at was White Bear Lake has their own ALC and it's, it's similar, you know, to ours in that we're about a very similar sized district. We have a lot of our demographics are very similar, so it's a good comparison district. South Washington County School District has a, an alternative high school, much bigger, much bigger district, much bigger scale. And then what you'll see is this, we have three programs that are run by nine sixteen ALC programs. One's called Eastview, one's Montamita, and one's called Metro Heights. But if we just start with kind of just looking at enrollment, this is just a snapshot of the enrollment, you kind of see how they kind of line up. All of them are kind of in that 75 to 118 number of students, so similar in size. White Bear Lakes is, you see, quite a bit bigger in their programming. And what you see there, I made a point of that, is that if we looked at just Stillwater and White Bear Lake, I get into numbers and stuff, do I apologize for that? But they, they serve about, we, we serve about 3.6 percent of our high school population we serve through the ALC. Compared to White Bear Lake, same size high school, they serve about 4.9 percent. So you see that they are actually serving more students than we are in their ALC program. So if you were to talk to their programs, there's some different things in scale there in how they do that. The, the other piece is, that I want to point out, is the three nine sixteen programs. Many, many districts, you know, around the area have gone to regional ALCs. That's just the way they, they support their students that, that could use an ALC program. So for example, Eastview, the Eastview nine sixteen ALC primarily serves students from Roseville and Mounds View schools. They don't run their own ALCs. Montamita ALC primarily serves students from North St. Paul and Montamita. And Metro Heights, which is probably the one furthest on the west side of the, of kind of our, of the east side, serves students from Columbia Heights and Fridley School Districts. So I just kind of want to give you a little comparison there.
Did you mention also compared staffing when you compared the number of students?
I did. And what you find is that South Wash and White Bear Lake has a much kind of lower staffing to student ratio, so more staffing in their programs.
Than what we have?
Than what we have, a little bit more. And then the, the nine sixteen programs have a little bit of a higher student to staff ratio, so they have less, a little bit less staffing. But they have some efficiencies in their programs with adminis, so that's just licensed teachers. But if you look at, you know, administration, they share more administrative costs across those pieces and the mental health and the, having sites like, because those schools are in separate sites, they're not like embedded into a high school. So in those sites, they have health services and mental health services and counseling services and those sort of things at their site. So a little bit different that way.
Using that same chart.
Yeah.
Could you tell us in that list of five, which are separate sites?
Yep, the first three are separate sites. And then the nine sixteen programs are all, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I misunderstood your question. I believe, well, do you know the White Bear Lake is?
It's its own site.
It's its own site. I, I believe that South Wash Alternative High School is its own site. I'm not positive about that one, we'd have to double check. And Stillwater's embedded in a high school.
Stillwater's the only one embedded in the high school, in a high school?
Of these.
Okay.
Sixth. I believe that the only one would be South Wash.
Are you gonna say anything to this? This is an interesting graph.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
This is really interesting.
So, so the next table you'll see down there is also represented in a graph on the next page, so you can kind of flow back and forth from it. But what this looks like, what this looks at is comparison of special populations. And really, the data, and this is pulled from MDE data, that's reported to MDE. You, the, the four, the top four are the ones with asterisks are the ones that are actually the special populations. You have English language learner, special education, free and reduced price lunch, and homeless. And you'll see kind of the breakdown there of districts. The non-special designation are those students that don't fall in one of those other categories. And so you, yeah, so you, now what you can have though is just, just for technicality sakes, you could have a student that's designated as special ed and free reduced lunch. Yeah, there's, so this is not a duplicated count. There, there certainly can be.
Okay.
But in this data, they just picked one and the student, well, they pick, they could be in both. So if anything, the non-special ed, the non-special designation would be the minimum of what it would be.
Can I jump in?
Please, yeah.
Thank you.
We had a long conversation about how to.
So what is represented, and ultimately, as you look at the bottom line, the percentage totals, they equal 100 percent. The one area that isn't identified necessarily in the Department of Education and Profiles is the non-special designation. And so the only way to compare apples to apples is just to assume that percentage is what makes up the rest. So you could have, I would assume, someone who falls under the homeless category would also fall under the free and reduced category, and they're going to be included in that percentage. But students who don't have any designation at a base going across for Stillwater or anyone else, for us, it's 4.6. It might be higher because you could, 46.6, thank you, 46.6. It might be higher than that, but we don't know in the other districts where the duplication falls. Like, we can pull our data and say, we have 100 students, we know 27 of them are free and reduced, but we know that 2.7 of them are also homeless. We can extrapolate that data for us, we can't do it for the other sites. So the only way to compare is to say, we know for sure, 46.6 of our, percent of our population has no designation, it honestly, and that's base, it honestly could be closer to 60. Because you don't know how much duplication is occurring above. Does that, it's, it's hard to understand because we know there's duplication above.
It's the minimum that it would be. We know for sure that that percentage doesn't have a designation, but as you combine, that percentage is most likely gonna go up.
I, I would guess, I mean, just for pure assumption sake, that anybody who qualifies as homeless is also qualifying for free and reduced. That would just be a pure, it's an assumption, I think it's a relatively safe one.
But so then, are they appearing in both of those categories or are they not appearing in both of those?
They're appearing in both of them.
Okay.
But the, but that's why.
That's why, that's the highest.
But that's why I say then the non-special designation, if you assume it's duplicative, actually would increase another 2.7 because we've counted those kids twice above. That's why.
What's, what's curious to me is the lack of English learners in ALC. That strikes me as odd.
Yeah.
But it's true on the other ones as well.
Some of it's self-reported.
Yeah, because what I'm thinking of is somebody advocating, or are they not advocating for those kids that this might be a good place for you?
They don't come as English language learners because they finished their years of time as English language learners.
So they're no longer?
But they're no longer current.
Okay.
And we have a high number of English language learners, no longer qualified for support service.
So they proven competency is what you're saying.
After six years, the funding dissipates for EL participation.
Okay, so, so you're saying something different because you're saying they're not necessarily competent, but the funding for them is gone.
Yes.
So they're not identified as readily.
Correct.
Thank you.
Very good point.
I, sorry.
Absolutely.
I'm still, I guess I'm still stuck on this non-special designation of why Stillwater's so much higher than the other districts. Is there any thought as to what that is?
I think, once we get into some of the overall current reality stuff.
The other big category that's different in comparing ours to others is the free and reduced lunch. So I think that just suggests that we have, you know.
Less property.
A little bit lower property, at least, at least that's what it looks like in this chart.
I don't know if you would make that assumption with Montamita in the mix.
Right, yeah.
But I don't know if they serve.
It's interesting.
I agree with George, I think it'll make sense when we get to the anecdotal pieces from the students, for sure.
I would say that too. And the other piece I would just mention is that, you know, I wanted to look at the special ed population there too, and you know, we're, we're about in the average range of the, of the special ed students accessing ALC to receive their services, so, with that being said. So I'll let George.
And so we'll just get into a little bit about attendance and then I'll move a little bit into current reality. So basically, wanted to kind of do some snapshots in regards to quarter, just look at average attendance per quarter. And, and so, as you can see, there tends to be, at the beginning of the year, second quarter, attendance is around 85, 16, 17, 85 percent, and then 17, 18, 93, and then this current year is around 91 percent. But trends, it looks like around second quarter, it tends to go down a little bit. Third quarter's around 68.3 percent third quarter, and that was 16, 17, and fourth quarter, 61.3. And this, 2017, 18, again, the second quarter, you see 80.9 percent, third quarter, 78.8, and then fourth quarter, 63 percent.
Is that the percentage of students still remaining when they have graduated? Or is that the percent of the total?
That's just based on pulling a Mars report, looking at the number of students who are enrolled and still working through.
So once they're graduated, they shouldn't be included in that count, correct?
Right. So then, if we go to the current reality perception data, the St. Croix Valley ALC has one administrator, five general ed teachers, one special education teacher, and, and has provided 3.7 fire, 3.75 hours of parent support per day. Currently, ALC students have access to chemical and mental health staff and counseling three days a week. As of November 1st, November 1st, we had about seven students who were enrolled also from the ALC also in the high school, seven. So they're taking classes, they're accessing some of the resources at the high school along with being in ALC. One of the pleasure or things that I experienced, me and Paul experienced, was sitting down with the ALC students and really was impressed and really lifted me up in regards to just their overall thoughts, their thoughtfulness, the maturity, and the reflective pieces that was really shined during our conversations. And so when we met with them, we just wanted to capture some of the themes we heard from them in regards to a couple of questions. And one was, kind of discuss some of the reasons they chose the ALC. And this is what we heard. The high school teachers at Stillwater focused more on academics and not relationships, they felt. There is a need and want for more individualized attention due to feeling that high school teachers do not have the interest or time to help them. The larger school created heightened anxiety for them. And then students wanted to get back on track for graduation. And there were a couple of stories talking about how there were struggles during their high school experience, and then they became motivated to make sure that they get caught up in their credits and to move towards graduation. Some student themes on what they liked about the ALC. They liked the ALC's small learning environment, they liked the individualized learning pace offered by the ALC. The relationships with ALC teachers and Julia Gagel, chemical health counselor, were important to the students. I think that was clear, that was, that they appreciated the fact she was accessible.
And the teachers as well.
And teachers as well. Also, a sense of belonging at the, at the ALC was a key theme for why students liked the program. They felt like they belonged. They felt like this was their space, they felt like it was an area for them to prosper and grow. Couple of themes that we also touched on, what they disliked about the ALC. Some students didn't like the transition, the transition students have to make from their space to the lunchroom. And, and so, you know, being into the high school and then having to go to lunch and come back, they, they didn't like that piece. Also, students did not like the small space they have. As an ALC, classrooms are packed and not enough space for them and teachers, and that's what they explained. And they don't like students who only show up once in a while and disrupt the learning of others. And so they talked about, there were some kids who really would not focus in their educational journey and that they, they became a family and they wanted to have that space sacred for those who wanted to learn. And then, one of the things we wanted to talk about is characteristics of an effective ALC program, and there's some citations at the end of the document. But some of the things I'll talk about as far as best practice models based on research is basically best practices for all kids. Students experience a sense of community, caring relationships are established between teachers and students, accessibility to counseling or mental health services, student-centered curricula and pedagogy is important, addressing the whole child's social and emotional programming and individualized programming. So with that being said, there are some components of the ALC that are fitting into what's best practices and characteristics, and so just kind of wanted to share that piece.
Is there, is there any professional, I mean, I'm looking at that first comment thinking about my, myself as a teacher, teachers focus more on academics and not relationships. Is there a specific professional development for individuals who teach ALC classes? Because that is a separate mindset, if you would, that, I mean, when I think of, of the ALC. the ALC teachers that I've known who've been really successful in our district, relationships are more important than academics. Now whether that's good or bad, that's just the way it is. And I wonder if we have teachers who are very strong academically, I'll just say they end up in the ALC, and relationships aren't number one, academics are number one to them. Is there a professional development?
I think I'd let very few into that as the, I mean, there isn't an official ALC gets this professional development.
There isn't.
There is a Minnesota Alternative School Program, and it's the MAP organization that we tend to use as our PD. But we also set very clear goals since I joined the group three years ago that align with our district mission. And we are a credit-earning organization. Don't get me wrong, we want post-secondary options, but we really seek credit earning. So some of the things that they've learned by going to the MAP professional development organization is, what shortcuts are there, what forms are there, what things can we use to help guide kids to keep track of their own learning? Because parents don't keep track of these kids anymore. And so, we can't use a Skyward system, so we've, we've picked up tools from the MAP organization. I also, as a personal belief, believe the whole child is the way to teach these children, and because of my background with restitution and restorative measures, the school is a restorative school, a site, and the teachers are all trained to keep their own circles, to work within core values, to understand that it's more than just the, the rule, it's the right and responsibility. So there's some judicious discipline instead of retributive discipline that happens, and so we welcome kids back. Outrageous love with Shiroaki Holley, all of us ALC people were going, that's who we are. So the culturally responsive classroom PD that's currently happening right now is who we've been for, at least since it's become a full-day program, that professional development echoes what we've been teaching throughout our own.
So as we interview for positions at the ALC, there's an awareness that relationships are as important as academics.
There's actually a two-page document for the past three years of who are we, what do we do, what do we believe, and it aligns with a core vision, that in May, every student sits down and says, what do we want our vision to be next year? And we set it in May for the following year, and these things are in writing, but in practice too.
Just from an anecdotal piece in regards to this restorative circles, when we were sitting down doing interviews, and so part of the circle process is to have a talking piece, and those who have, we pass that around for those who speak, to speak, it was funny, not funny, but it was just like, they reinforced that process, because we kind of went off a little bit, and they brought us back and say, no, we need to bring the talking piece back in. I don't know if I got scolded, but, but, I mean, that was a real focus, so credit to Mary and just reinforcing some of those principles, because it created a safe space for them.
Are any of our current staff members dual-licensed? Is it hard to find teachers that are dual-licensed in core subject areas?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not hard there because they've joined the ALC with dual licenses. Plus, we've asked for generalist license. The teachers who choose ALC know they're teaching five content areas a period. That's why the Skyward gradebook doesn't reflect their grades very well. But there's special ed and math and music and German and one math teacher. There's, the school psychologist is also an English teacher, and doesn't have a reading background, but has expertise in drama and theater. And then Tom Went becomes a generalist and he gets a waiver, a variance, whatever language you want to use, in order to teach all content, but he's science, art, Phi Ed, and math. Physics too. And then, the special ed teacher just does special ed, and the social studies teacher teaches all of the social content that would be taught in the entire high school social career, including electives. And the science teacher gets a waiver or variance because she does physical science and chemistry and earth science too.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think going back to the original question, I think you've answered that. Our teach ALC age-old, our teachers, great teachers, are they born or are they made? I think the, the question here though, and I think you've answered that, is you look for people who have those kinds of propensity. Like empathy, compassion, caring for kids is extremely high. And you nurture it by professional development, or you bring it out more, you increase their knowledge base. But the trick is to get, find people who are interested, and that's, that's a challenge, but that's what makes for success.
So we wanted to try to make sure that we gave you enough information about the ALC current program, so that we could get to the program options as it relates to the budget piece, because it's a difficult conversation. And kind of to Paula's statement at the, at the beginning, it, it isn't a revenue-generating thing, it becomes a thing of, of how much, how much can we afford based on kind of what Ricky talked about, the quality, quantity program, all of that. And so, what we wanted to try and show you is, on the last page then, what, what are options for ALC? And, at least at this point in our perspective, in terms of its relationship to our budget conversation that, that we're grappling with. And so there essentially are four. One is, we continue doing what we're doing, which means our students are at the high school inside of the ALC program, living in that high school. As we mentioned, we now have seven students that are taking advantage of classes in the high school, so that's one positive piece. Also, the access that we have to mental health and chemical health. There's obviously cons to that as well, and those are brought up as well, and George and Paul talked about those. There's, there's constraints on our space in terms of flexibility, in terms of flexibility. But that being said, right now, as the current model is, gets back to our attendance and our ability to generate funds on students in the program, it costs us about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars additional, so from the general fund, to support that program. So that's neither good or bad, that just, that's what it would be. And then if you moved into some other options, so for, you're moving the ALC program out of the high school, you really have, have two options there. One is, you, you look at what would it take to move the ALC into the Oak Park building as an option? The Oak Park building is there. You get positives and, you get pros and cons of that. You, you have the ability to have some additional space with that programming. However, we will lose the amount that we have in terms of access, as it's set up currently with mental health, chemical health, and all that, because now you're back in a separate building. And so we have to navigate, how do we do that piece? And then there's going to be some reduction in the opportunities for kids to take classes out of the general curriculum, as well as access to electives, just because of location. So if you took all of that, there becomes an additional budgetary increase, because you're, you're going to want to provide services for those kids. And so, that would be that three hundred and twenty thousand, in addition to adding time for a nurse, chemical health, mental health, counseling. There also would probably be a cost of, how do we reconfigure that space at Oak Park to meet the needs for that type of a program? So, we would look, be looking probably in the ballpark of about four hundred and twenty-seven thousand to run the program in addition there. Then you could move it offsite, kind of as a third one, but you would go back to what we had prior to the seventeen, eighteen school year, which would be like the West Campus, where you went and leased a space. Essentially, you have all the same stuff that you had in the second option, but you just add whatever the leasing cost would be. And, what we currently have at Oak Park, because we have the transitions program there, we already have a shuttle bus set up that goes there, so that wouldn't be an issue. We already have a food setup for lunches from Stillwater Metros, so that wouldn't be a problem. What would, what you would add in a leased space is, then, the ability to shuttle kids there, so there's a transportation cost that gets added in, and then you have one more stop for food, and whatever that would be. So there's just, there's some additional costs if you were to leave. So that, that we think probably would raise it to about five fifty, because you'd have some additional staffing costs, and like I said, transportation costs, things like that. And then the last option, of course, and as Paul pointed out, there's the Matamida nine sixteen. Now this would be different than before, this would mean that Stillwater as a school district would not have an ALC program. Stillwater would utilize Matamida site, because it's not the Matamida school district, it's just the, the ALC, the nine sixteen ALC that's at the Matamida site. Our students would, that were in the ALC, would attend there. Our credit recovery kids, so your twelve, some of your twelve-plus kids that just need credit recovery to get caught up, would still get credit recovery here, a lot like they do now after hours. So they would, nine sixteen would run credit recovery at our high school for those students after the school day. But the kids who are in the ALC program during the day would be transported to nine sixteen, their day there, and then transported home. This would actually be about that three hundred and twenty reduction to the budget, because there isn't a cost associated with that move to nine sixteen. Those students become nine sixteen students.
Which means we don't provide transportation.
Well, the way that, well, so technically, we provide transportation, but get reimbursed for the transportation.
But.
And then there's the extra.
But it's not, no, 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 but it's, please understand, it's not like a hundred percent reimbursement. Years ago, there was four point six five percent of the general education aid was set aside for transportation. It got rolled in, oh my gosh, probably fifteen years ago into the gen ed formula. We would still collect that four point six five percent of the six thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars for transportation. That is not going to anywhere near cover the cost of a bus going back and forth. We would have some reimbursement, but it wouldn't cover the cost of a shuttle. There would be expense to us. That they would have transportation? Yes. What would, yes, what would need to be worked out would be, again, like we've done in the past, we have essentially the collection at the high school. All kids ride from their particular areas in the district to the high school, at which time, they would load another bus, no different than the, than transition now. They would hop on that bus, get shuttled over, and then at whatever the end of the day, or if the hours could work to get them back to the high school to get on their respective buses going home. There wouldn't be half-day options, midday options, those sorts of things, but it would be a to and from, if we chose to do that, but it would be a cost.
So, just then, in the technicality phase of it, also with that, if kids are at nine sixteen, all of the levy dollars from our district do not transfer to the nine sixteen program following them. There's a, there's a trade-off there, so.
And we couldn't provide transportation for them to have a full day, right? Because they'd have that.
Actually, nine sixteen did come and meet with us when we were talking about all of our special education services and, and some of their plans a little over a week ago. And why we have on here the decision by December for the nine sixteen staff is they've indicated that they can figure that out, they just wouldn't need to know for staffing and the building and how many kids by December. So, you know, if they start to, if our kids, typically, I think when we looked at it, our students would be ready to start earlier than the Matamida ALC starts right now. But what Connie Hayes indicated is they could adjust that with staff, so they would have somebody there earlier for staff, and then our kids would leave before the typical end of the day at their ALC. So, they would have the full day, but they're.
Well, you say that, but the thing is, the way our minutes are calculated, it wouldn't necessarily mimic what the high school, and I don't know that the high school has advisor on my way going off of, like, you don't have fifteen minutes here and you don't have pony time here, and you don't, you know, their, their model would look very different to make sure they get the number of minutes in. So they would get in the full minutes? We have to. We have to. Yeah, we have to.
Yes, I, I'd like to simply say that we want these students to be treated like all other students. The world has enough, has enough segregation. We need to realize that these people are going to grow up, and they need to be associated with students like they are now. I, I think the, continuing the program with the current, the program is, is by far, for the long-term effect and the satisfaction of those students, is important. I mean, we, we, we want, do not, we do not want to create a world for these students where they do not have a chance to interact with other students that don't have these problems. I was a principal for twenty-seven years in Stillwater, in Great Falls, in Stillwater, and seventeen years in Montana. And I saw the evil of segregated schools in Montana, between Indians and American Indians, and the, the problems that they, they had to live with after they graduated. We need to provide the safest, caring environment, so that they can grow up and live in this community, become active participants in this community. And we shouldn't be looking at ways, on this particular case, population, to find ways to save money. That, that's immoral. They need, they deserve the right satisfaction and the right help of every other student. If we, if we went to the, to the high school and said, well, we're going to eliminate all the gifted programs because they're too costly. Think about that. What we're doing is trying to create programs where kids can be successful, not segregate them, not deal with them in ways that are not good. So I, I urge you, stay with the current program, find, find some money someplace else. They're very important members of our community.
And I think that's the point of the presentation, is to throw out what, what is, what are the options, and that's, that's kind of what, as a board.
Can you talk a little bit more about what the exact, you're, but, you're saying that the current program as it sits right now costs us three hundred and twenty thousand dollars above and beyond the typical cost of educating all other students?
Not the typical cost, it's about the, the revenue that, if you were to take those students, it's the revenue, the total revenue of what those students generate.
Okay.
Versus the expense of the program. That's where the difference lies.
So does that include, that includes their normal, like, we get a certain amount of money from the state for all, you know, all students, right? So then we get, can you just explain that a little bit?
Sure.
What do you mean by that?
So, and I'm going to make the assumption that the student isn't in the high school at all. They're just, they're just a. Let's start, because they are in the high school now, let's start with the assumption they are in the high school. But it doesn't matter because the program, like, their whole day is spent in the program of the ALC.
You're meaning physically.
I know, but, but we have students enrolled in our district, and we get money from the state for those, that, just that basic level of enrollment, right? Yes. So, that's part of the cost we would lose if those kids went to nine sixteen, isn't it?
But they also pick up the expense of their education. Both of those leave.
Right.
But it costs us more to educate them than, that's where you have, it's more expensive.
It's a school within a school, so it costs, those kids regardless, regardless of if they're sitting in an eleventh grade, in the, ignore physical presence, in the regular high school, those students are generating as much sitting in eleventh grade regular high school as they are in ALC.
Okay.
Same revenue.
That's what I was trying to clarify, so then what's the additional three hundred and twenty thousand? What's that cost?
That is the cost of having, well, and it's everything, it's, it's the staffing ratio, it's, you know, how many, how much staff is provided there, it's the administration, it's the para, it's the cost of, again, that program against how much those kids, again, don't go there.
So if we had the same staffing ratio in the ALC as we do in the regular school, then that cost would not be quite so high?
Isn't that correct? Well, if, so. Right, because the way I look at it, there's seventy-two students, which would be two staff members.
Right.
Right, and so we have five. So that's where I was wondering, that's why I was asking about the dual-licensure, is it an option to decrease staffing and increase independent learning, so that we can? And one of the challenges we do run into is the inconsistency of the membership. Because again, our, you know, when we, when we have a student in eleventh grade in the regular high school, you just assume we're going to get membership days of a hundred and seventy-two days. That's how long they're going to be there. When you have membership in the ALC, whether it's contingent upon graduation, dropout, more than fifteen consecutive days of not showing up, that drops, and you've staffed at the high level, and you might be collecting at the low level. That's kind of where you get that gap.
A question I have, I think earlier in some of your talks or suggestions, you mentioned kind of a fifth option, and that was doing something with New Heights or whatever. And I, I just wondered what happened there, or just wasn't feasible, or what? I don't, I'm curious.
I think that would be, that would be more of a blend of that. One thing that, in talking with some of the ALC staff, now a part of what, what you guys have done is we. have done is we, we've, while students go to New Heights, we've also gotten students back from New Heights into our ALC program. And so I think it comes back to the question of the graph that had our non-designated students, and the question of why, why are students choosing the ALC? Would, would students choose to go to New Heights and stay there as part of a program? And how many would do that? And then you'd also have a 916 component to that as well. So you could continue to, to explore that. I guess I'm not confident that.
See, one of the things to me that seems, and we've talked about it when we have had other conversations on transportation, that, that there are some expectations. Kids are going to have a longer day, significant number of them. It's further away distance-wise, and it doesn't allow for coming and going. And I think on most of those topics, New Heights would be closer. But again, there may be some other complexities, and I'm sure there are that I haven't even thought of. But I'm thinking for a lot of kids, from my perception, New Heights is serving them and serving them well. And, and I think that's what everybody's after, no matter which one of those options we go with, is how well we service kids and.
I think, and just, just some perception pieces, you know, we are getting kids back, but I think they have a niche of the alternative learner that I think they can capture, but I don't think it can be a total shift to, to that, that, that program. I think they do well with certain kids.
You know, one of the things that, that I, Georgia, in particular, and you probably identified it earlier, there are a lot of kids who, and whether it's the lunchroom or whether it's the building itself that I, that I've talked to, not great numbers, but some, who just have anxiety going into that big a place. And, and I'm saying those are some kids that have it. Now, they may have anxiety too because of their lack of success or, or other hardships that are going on in their life, but.
Yeah, I mean, that was such a big theme that, you know, we saw, is that, and I don't think it, I think for some kids, the anxiety is about, like you mentioned, the space or crowded halls, or maybe past relationships with other kids that, that cause them anxiety. But the one thing they talked about is once they get into this, it's the community, it, the space is whatever, but it's, it's really the, the people and the community, and that then lowers their anxiety, because people now are ready to, to pace at their pace and to, to allow them to be successful, regardless of if it's at a 916, you know, it's, but they build that community, and that's, I think, what drops that anxiety more than anything.
I, so I just want to interject with a comment and then a question. Comment, looking at this and the pros and cons, and, you know, something that I, it's valuable to me and on so many levels is, is really the, the notion of stability and consistency. And I just, you know, we've had, what, not a long time at the high school, you know, and, you know, I just, I personally struggle with this notion of, you know, well, this year we were here, and so we didn't like, we're going to go there, and this, you know, let's try this. And I, I just think that is, it does, it does, it's detrimental to the, to the child as they, as they, you know, they need stability, a child, everyone needs stability and consistency. So, you know, maybe it's not perfect right now, but my gosh, you know, what about addressing, addressing things and seeing where we can go with that? So I just, I just want to, you know, stability is, is very, very important because stability leads to a sense of confidence. And I just want to throw that out there. And then the question again to me is, I didn't, I feel like it's not answered still. The 46.6 non-special designation, I just, so we're high there. What is it, kids that feel bullied or, or, you know, what, is that mental health or just don't feel that they feel part of the population at, at the school, which bothers me also?
For whatever, whatever reason, I think that came out in some of the themes I spoke about, and I reported, and when we met with the kids.
I, I think the thing that we need to remember is that they are part of our general population. They live in families that live in this community. They probably have siblings that live with the same families. I just don't want to put, I just cannot deal with putting dollar value on students. What, what are we going to lose or what is going to cost us? They're part of our society, they're going to be here. And if, if we, if we lose some of these students who have brothers and sisters in the same families, have you ever thought of the loss of state aid for those normal kids? If they, their families decide to go to a different school? We're not talking just kids that are special needs here, we're talking about families. We were, we were hired to teach students not to figure out how to save money on some that are not quite as gifted as others. It really bothers me.
Just like to throw out a piece, you know, the, we have some really amazing kids at the ALC. They are, you know, many of them have extra challenges, but when you sit down and have conversations with some of our kids there, they are amazing, and they are teaching themselves, and they, they haven't been successful at the high school for a number of things. And I'm just going to put on the table, we need to do a better job at the secondary level of meeting our kids' needs. If you have chemicals, social, emotional, something going on at home, we all know that those things are happening more and more. We need to be flexible with our kids to give them the flexibility to be successful and help them through that time. And my four years here, I've heard that time and again from the students and families at the ALC, is that the group non-designated are people where they don't like the, you know, either it's a six-hour period sitting and what the instruction looks like, or missing those relationships. We know some of our teachers are amazing at doing that. All of us know that probably everyone around the table could always improve on, you know, connecting with our kids. So I think that's one thing, no matter what, we need to do is look at that group that you had mentioned, Jennifer, and say, talk to them more and find out why are you here and what's not working at the high school, and then work with our high school staff to figure out a better way to do that.
It's a significantly higher percentage than the neighboring programs. It just, it, it's significant, so.
You know, you mentioned earlier that, the idea that we're kind of jumping around from A to B to C to, you know, and, and when we think about it, we're in the early part of a second-year trial, if you will, at the high school. And I agree with Don, I, I think the dollar amount is compared to the budget, total budget is minuscule. But I'm thinking back to when Don Johnson was the interim principal at the high school before Rob Bach, I think. And I went up to see him, and I said, what would you tell board members is the biggest problem at the high school? And he said, I would tell those board members they should be ashamed of their curriculum guide. And I said, really? He says, you are not setting up your curriculum guide for success for your bottom-third academic students. He said, you're doing a great job for the top group of students. But he said, your bottom-third students, he says, look at the elective, what should they take? What would be their elective choices? And I think when we start looking at, you know, student-centered curriculum and pedagogy and individualized programming, that's maybe a little bit more significant than whether we put them, you know, here, A, A-location, B-location, C. I think it's relationships, yes, but it's also, are, are we setting up elective so that those kids want to be here? You know, maybe that's why that 46% is on the bottom of the thing. And so the pathways that you've tried to push us in a direction, I, I think is absolutely the way to go to catch many of those kids and keep them out of that 46%.
And I, so I agree with that stability, with they're our kids, I want to keep our kids. I know we have other kids that we, that are served well at 916, but I think, is there a way that we can serve these kids well? And I don't know if the staff's been asked if there's a way, we do have to care about money, we can't just, I mean, we can't just have a bucket and we have to spend out of it, but is there a way we could do better, but keep the kids and still maintain the integrity of the program? I think that's what a lot of us, it sounds like, where we're kind of at with that.
Well, I don't think it's, it's a question, realize that's an element. If they were thriving at the high school, keep them there. If they're not, and for, you know, the total percentage of kids is not high, put them in a place where they're going to be successful. So I think when you look at the options, like you said, you can't totally disregard funding. But at the same time, what's in their interest? Where are they going to thrive? Where are they going to be successful? Because you're right, Don, we can't write any group of kids off and say, they're never going to amount to something. It's quite frankly, that's not true. And, and like Denise said, many of these kids, they're very bright, they're very functional, they're good at other things. Our job is to pull those out of those kids and build on it.
We're only a little over at, what, a year end? How can we have a good, how can we really know? We're, you know, I just.
Well, I think what we know is the cost, right? So that's.
And our hope here was simply to give you enough information to have this discussion.
I, I want to thank you all for this, and you for being here, because we wanted this for a long time, so I thank you very much.
It was really, really awesome to hear your anecdotal comments from the students, because that's, that's what I've heard in the past two weeks, gotten a few emails from parents and heard from some students themselves as well. I think it just absolutely encapsulates exactly what, what matters most, and I, I think Don hit it exactly too. These are our kids, they're a very special population. We need to take care of them, just like we take care of all of our kids. We need to make sure that all of our kids feel like they have a place, that they belong, that we're doing everything we possibly can to help them be successful in life. And personally, I mean, I would, at this point, I want to take the Matamidi thing off the plate, because I just don't think that that's doing our job. We, I just, I think these are our kids and we want to keep them here, and we will do whatever it takes to make sure we can cover the cost. That's where I'm at. That's, that's our job. So that's at least where I'm at right now. Where are we at as far as a timeline on this? I mean.
Well, if we would, if you would want to consider the 916 a program action with them, we just need to let them know by December because they need to.
Figure out staffing and buildings and transportation and those kind of things. So that's their.
Is it possible for us to keep the program exactly as it is for next year and include this as part of one of the components of the long-range planning task force?
Sure, yeah, the only reason.
Maybe that ties into some of the other work, the pathways work, the, you know, I don't know, transitions, whatever else, else might be important to consider together with the ALC question? I mean, does that, is that appropriate? We can, we can make things work for another year, see how it goes.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I don't.
That's why they're all just options. The only thing that, the only one that had any type of a timeline was, in talking with Connie Hayes, if, if that were something we were doing. Now, because we would be with another group, we have to go off of the timeline they need, but the, the other options are on our timeline.
Okay.
So again, it's just, we want you to have, have the information and then where you want to go with it.
Right, and what we have to realize is, we, I agree, take the Matamidi off, but we also, if we're going to take things off, we have to find things, you know, to replace it with.
Exactly, right, right.
So, but yes, we can, staying status quo is option number one, right there.
Always an option. 35 minutes to figure out the rest of it.
No one is suggesting otherwise.
Any more questions for Paul or George before they?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So much.
So can I ask a question just before you go? I, I would just like to know if there's a way we could decrease by one staff and still maintain the integrity, so there'd be some savings there?
That would be tough.
I think we're really slim. I mean, we, we have the, the chart, but when we look at what our teachers are doing, I would not feel comfortable making that recommendation, even by one. You heard Mary and.
I was going to say, is Mary the variant?
They are masters at differentiating the, the variances that Marian mentioned. It's kind of that two-for piece where we've found people who are willing to do that variance and learn and teach those subjects, but also you have a limit on the number of variances and the numbers of years, you can ask that from MDE. So I feel like their plates are full, and when we look at the staffing across the other models, we are very slim. Is that, would that remind?
And I think the only reason we're going to make that work is the staff that we have in the program now are extremely skilled at what they do. I couldn't imagine what it would be like for them to do it with one lesson.
I appreciate that.
Denise is, and Mary mentioned the variance too. Is that still going to be available with the tier system?
With the tier, it depends, it, it'll be teacher by teacher.
Yeah, I know. But I, I question whether they're going to give you that variance and how long. Yeah, well, you can't, you can't, I mean, they're.
It's just like, that's if it doesn't fit us. State will have to think of ways to have a flexible cover. How about we give you this, Shelley? We'll give you increased credit earning, because we actually are starting work experience semester two. Who needs work experience? Seniors who are 19 or raising their own babies. I have four babies in my building, okay? You know, who's in the building wasn't shared today?
Well, the babies aren't.
They could be.
daycare, we could do.
Yeah, right, that would be our revenue.
Two do come in the building for breastfeeding during the day. So, you know, you do have these really unique kids, so I'm, I'm honored by the words I hear here, and if I can get greater credit earning, I will push those programming options forward. And I'll tell you, the district supported the professional development for Tom to be certified with work experience, and that's world, the world's best workforce goal is personified. So we'll continue to align those things, we'll do what we can. If you've got any more rooms for us at the high school, we'll take two more, then we can bring 50 more kids there, if you give us more room. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to keep moving through with some more information for you. We have, we'll share with you.
Down to two of us.
They're dropping. What we're going to share with you is, I had mentioned that Kathy couldn't be here, so.
Denise, sorry, I've been asked for you to take a quick five-minute break.
Oh, yep, sure, yep.
Sorry, thank you.
Bathroom and water break.
This should have got past your house, you.
20 minutes. I dropped it off right there.
Should be this.
Yes, I know. That's exactly right.
What? I didn't think, I didn't think, Shelley, I didn't think you had it, it was like.
Oh, my gosh. I can't wait.
Joe, we can make more copies for you.
I might be, I know, I might want a couple extra.
Shelley, can I get one more for Kristen? Thank you.
All right, so we're ready, roll.
All right, good. We'll move on, and the next thing we wanted to share with you, and Bob and I can speak to this fairly well, but if there's a specific question we can't, this comes from HR from Kathy. And I know there's been a lot of conversation about consultants and district consultants, there's too many consultants. And so what we're trying to share with you as an example, we have a list of the consultants within the district, and they come in five different categories. But what we wanted to start is give you an example of an impact of why we moved from in-house to a consultant basis. And this is, this example we're giving you is in-house benefits administration versus if we did consulting. And so the piece that you have in front of you is, if we bring administration in-house to hire full-time employees to the HR department, the two positions that we would need for this are an HR, HR benefits coordinator, and that is a total yearly cost of about $107,000 with salary and benefits. And what we've done there is list you an example of the duties, the type of things that that person does. Then the second. Then the second position would be an HR benefits tech, and the total yearly cost of that position. And you can see some of the duties that that person has beneath that. So the total increased staffing costs, if we would have this in-house, are about $182,000. When we consult, our currently, our current cost for that is about $99,130. So for many folks, when they talk about, all right, what, too many consultants, many districts you'll find, instead of having the in-house people with the, the expertise in some of these areas, use the consultant piece just because it does save money. You can see that she also put there an asterisk that we don't have developed computer systems for our enrollment and management. If we would go towards something like that, you would need to invest in those enrollment systems for the computers. On the backside are more examples of the benefits of retaining consultants in this work. But one of the things Kathy, and you can see that she highlighted it for you there, is especially with some of the HR pieces, it's important that the benefits are handled on a pre-tax basis, because failure to comply with all the laws related to all of these things can result in a loss of non-taxable benefits, requiring us to go back and charge all of our employees' back taxes and apply taxes to the district costs as well. And so it's really crucial for these, it's an example for this position, that you have people knowing what they're doing, because otherwise you impact the district in a negative way and our employees in a negative way when it comes to the HR. So when we look at, as a district, what do we do, you know, as far as what do our consultants look like, they come in different areas. One of the first ones is just the benefits administration that we are talking to you about now, which is our, our plan source, our Sand Creek that does our employee assistance programming. Those are pretty limited under benefits administration, and we, it costs us about $117,000 a year for that. One of the bigger pieces are, and I'll let Kristen talk to this if we have any, if you have any questions about it, but the district operations and the facility operations are those which we've talked to you about, that it requires to have an outside person to do the training for us. So some of those are Larson Engineering, Hallberg Engineering, some of the environmental companies that come and do now are, are lead testing for our water, mold, any insect type of, which actually our insect bill gets to be pretty costly with kids eating in buildings, but those facility and operational things are companies that come in and do that work. Many of the things under the educational programming that you'll see are, one of the highest costs is actually for our coaching and our music programs, because some of our coaches are listed under here, and then some of our, whenever we have a, a music like the, now I'm going to forget the word for, when we ever...
Accompanists.
Well, accompanists, who come in and accompany our groups, but when they have the small groups and you have somebody come and give the kids feedback on their plane.
He's a clinician.
Clinician.
All of those things, yes. Clinician, choreographers, all those kind of things, they come under consultants also. And so another piece with the consultants that I think is interesting is, you have to remember that what you're seeing here and what the public sees with that, when they look at that big amount, which it is a big amount when you look at all the things that happen under there, but a lot of those also account for money coming, or leaving the district, but don't account for the money coming into the district. So an example of that, when we had the conference that we held this last summer with Stanford D-School, and we had the educators from across the metro, and not metro, but even the country come to that, we spent and paid out money for those, but what this doesn't show you is that we also got money coming back in to make those costs neutral. So just remember that as you look at that piece with the consultants.
They don't have that sheet.
Nope, I know they don't.
So, Don, I was going to ask that.
You can, yep, and I will make, we'll make copies for this, but I just wanted to give you that kind of background information of that, that, and most of these actually, as you go through, you're going to see that they're pretty self-explanatory. The, the, the ones that are operations or facilities, you can tell by the name of the company or whatever that that's what they do. The ones that are more individual people's names are those coaches and the music, a lot of the individual people that we hire for the tutoring for like the music groups. So...
Shnata is coming up. Shnata, I just want to just do a little bit of a anti-that. I, I don't know that all clinicians though, like for music are, because I know that they have to apply for a lot of grants with partnership plan, they did that, so I, so there is a difference.
So, but here's where I think we're trying to get at it. When you, when you look at what's getting expensed out for consultants, it goes out the expense door, gets listed as a consultant. What you don't see is the revenue side of where it's coming from. So there's two buckets, right? It could be coming from the general fund, which is our money and then paying it out, or it may have come from a grant, which comes into the system, but it still shows up as an expense to the system on the outside. It was a dollar in, dollar out, it shows as an expense.
But I, but I think one way perhaps of dealing with that, and I'm throwing it out more as something to think about conceptually, like today I go through the disbursements. One of the things that I liked that you did in the latest is it's got mileage, is completely separate and it's listed for everybody. So I'm thinking what you may want to do is to group that differently in the future. Maybe where you had consultants, and maybe where you had a section that would talk about, okay, this is what went out, this is what came off, came in to offset it. Now, I don't have that template in my mind now, but I'm saying those are some of the things you might play with that are more user-friendly. And, and we don't have to dwell on it, we've only got 12 minutes left.
Another point, I think, you know, so some of the bigger pieces that I know you all feel are important, for instance, under educational programming, we listed them and you'll see them in order from what we spend the most on to, you know, the least, it was about $75 for some of the individual pieces, but...
Are you going to hand that out to us?
Yep, I'm going to give you a copy.
It's the consultants, is that what we're doing?
Yep, you can. The Youth Services Bureau are, are programming for, with our chemical health is about $64,000 a year. Minnesota Alliance with Youth, $58,000 a year. Hudson YMCA, $23,000 a year. Orthopedic Sports, which is for our sports teams and the trainers who come, $22,000 a year. There's a few, then after dropping off that, there are a few Equity Alliance, JK Movement, those are some of the programs that Minnesota State High School League, that are a little bit, you know, they're between like eight and $3,000, and then you see they drop pretty quickly down from 1,000 to 600 to 300. Revart Art, an example of that, you'll see is they did the, worked with the Stonebridge Teachers and Kids, it was a grant that we paid for the grant and then we got money back from it. So that's a good point, Mike, is trying to find with these what that might look like. I'm not sure what that might look like.
Yeah, I'm not either.
We, so I'm going to ask, the reason I don't have it to you today is I'm going to just give Kathy, she quick finished it and then had to leave, and I want to make sure that it's accurate, but I think you'll see that it's pretty self-explanatory.
Thank you.
Yep. And then the last thing we just wanted to talk about is, one of the things I know for us to look at at your top was professional development, and we spent some time talking with Rachel Larson and the PD group and our teachers and principals, and I just want Bob to give you, as we look at that PD, I think it's important, you'd have a little idea about what that might look like, just because some of those things are directly related to some of your world's best workforce and the things that you're trying to do in that neck of your work, and so I'm going to have Bob just share generally.
So there were, so actually there were three other areas that we, that came out as green to look deeper into. And so one was the PD curriculum, and when we, when we pulled it out there, when we first put it up, it was titled as just professional development, and I'll explain kind of what Denise was talking about, there's a linkage. And then the other piece that we put up there was we could make some adjustments to assessment. So one of the line items is assessments, I believe it's the second, yep, it's the second one on that sheet. And then the last one I want to just share with you that we dug into was the idea of the high school credits, the additional high school credits. So just give you some snapshots of what we found out, digging into those in more detail. So with professional development and curriculum, the, as we went through the budgets and Rachel Larson went through what they're working on now and what we're, what we think we need to work on coming to the future, it really ends up that we have quite a few things that are really connected between the PD side and the curriculum side. And so it didn't make sense to just say, we're going to take, we recommend this out of PD and not touch anything else. And so it really worked out to be about 250 each is where we're at. And what we found is that we really have two buckets of things, curriculum, PD, that go together. In terms of categorizing them as projects, we have, we have projects that are in progress, so they're in some stage. So for example, developmental design, we kicked that off, we trained teachers, we're in progress of continuing to train teachers. The next phase would be getting the next group of teachers trained. So that's something you could slow down, you could speed up, you, there's some flexibility of what we do with that. Things like responsive classroom, the same way. We've kicked off responsive classroom, we have all the original training done for that, we're right on the verge of, if we weren't in this situation, we for sure would be looking at stage two, which is the behavioral component of responsive classroom, but that's an in-progress thing. Our work with intercultural coaching that we've kicked off, that's an in-progress thing. We're in year two of that work this year, we've got Sharaqie Holly on board and we're working on with our secondary buildings, but it's in progress. Looking at our science standards, that was next on the docket. We can, we can slow that a little, down a little bit, particularly because the state hasn't adopted the next standard yet, so we can have some flexibility there.
I thought they were doing secondary literacy.
As I'm getting, so the last part as an example is the literacy piece, right? So the reason we call it in-progress, we kicked off elementary, but as we've shared with you, our goal was to and is, starting the discussion with secondary. We can slow that down a little, there's no outside requirement to get that done. So those are examples of in-progress things, adjustments we can make. There's also things inside of those two budgets that we would consider standard. We really need to keep doing them if we're, if it is what we're doing. So things like, we have, we have costs associated with project lead-the-way programming, annual bills, that comes out of, of the curriculum side of the house. So we, that's not in progress, we, we need to pay that bill. Our instructional coaches, that's something that is a standard practice at this point, that, that we would figure out how to continue doing. Our math corps, we, core, we pay for lifeguards because of FIAED programming, we have a music repair budget, we have traveling teachers. Things that fall into those types of categories are our standard. We got to figure out, whatever we cut, I got to figure out how we pay for those things. So that's where we came up with, rather than just looking at professional development, we'd still get the, we'd still go after the $500,000 in reduction, but we would, on our side of the house, we would say, it's really going to be about 250 out of the PD side and 250 out of the curriculum side. And then we'll tool this up as we move forward in what we can push and support and what we have to really slow down, because it's just, it's where we're at. No different than your whole budget type thing. So that's the PD curriculum thing. We would, if it's, if it's a place that the board wants to go, we have some, we've got ways to figure out how to manage it. And that's, those are some examples of how we would, would manage that moving forward, and that's work we typically start doing right now anyway if we weren't in this type of situation. The next piece that's on there is the assessments and things like that, and we spoke about how we could shift some things with the amount of assessments that we do. And what that looks like with a little more specificity is, with our, with our ACT tests, we offer ACT tests, we have to offer ACT tests, up to this point, we have paid for that first ACT test. That's about a $40,000 bill. So one recommendation we would have, if that's the route we're going, is we would not pay for that ACT test any longer. No, just like other conversations, that does impact the families and the kids, but that's, that's something to decide whether that's what we want to do. We would still...
Was it for senior money at some point?
Yeah. I didn't bring this, I think it's, I think it's like a hundred-ish, 110, something like that. The bill to the...
I remember thirty, oh, no, I'm thinking of AP tests.
So I'm getting to that.
I'm thinking one-time money.
The total bill's about $40,000 to do our junior class ACT initial test.
But what is it for per student?
That's right, so divide 40,000 by 600-ish.
Oh, okay.
There's roughly, would be a rough number.
Okay.
The state paid for that for one year for us?
So we could advocate for them to pay for it again?
It's one of those, let's mandate it and not fund it things.
Well, eventually you're going to fund it. One-time money.
Yeah, one-time money. So that would be the first thing we'd look at. And again, this is much like what Ricky presented, it isn't an all or nothing, it's, that would get us 40,000, if you see on the sheet, I wrote, I ballparked about 75 is what we could gain total.
Would you get some positive vibes by some parents and kids if you test it one time plus anyway? In other words, you paid them to take it, did they take it during class time?
The ACT, they do.
They do that now.
The pre.
Yeah, they take it during class.
They do that now.
That's probably one of the ones that people actually like to take, because it helps them, you know, with college readiness, whereas the MCAs and all that stuff that we are...
Well, you can take it twice, the results belong to you, so you can choose which one you want to send.
ACT is valuable.
Yeah, the ACT. So I think the, the big picture there is, we, we give it, we're going to continue to give it, the question is, is it a cost that we want to continue to incur or not? Or a portion of the cost or not? I mean, there's nothing that says you couldn't do half.
Do you know if parents can use 529 funds for that?
I do not know the answer to that.
That's a good question.
I don't know.
Seems logical that they'd be able to.
That I don't know.
Well, and this one feels like one that if we wanted to change, it'd be, we might get a lot of pushback, right? Because parents don't already know what...
So, so hold that question, let me get through the rest of the assessment stuff, because I think it's important to see them all together and then you kind of start. So the other thing we can do that I listed there is, we could, we currently for credit recovery and for some other things, use a program called Edgenuity, which allows kids to do online work. It's a cost of $30,000 to the district. In doing some research with some other districts, we could use, there's another program called Apex out there, I know some other districts are getting that at about half the cost. So there's an option, we could not renew for Edgenuity, use a different program, probably save roughly $15,000. That would be something, from my perspective, I'd go, okay, no-brainer, let's try that and, and see if we can do it. We could reduce the ACT Aspire. So the way that, the way to think about how this works is, ACT Aspire currently, we, we offer in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade. This is one where we pay per seat to do. And so if what we did is we just did ACT Aspire in sixth grade and eighth grade, and I think we had this conversation a little bit before, that would, that would then align with just doing the pre-ACT in 10th grade. So instead of doing six through 10, we would go sixth grade, eighth grade, 10th grade. That would give us about $33,000 to do, to do that. Caveat to that, just so that you understand what the implication is, that means that we do, we would not have any achievement-type test data for our ninth graders. Seventh grade still does MCA, right? So MCAs go through eighth grade. So that ninth grade class, we'd just have to be okay with the fact that at, at that point, we don't have a solution for, do we need to give ninth grader something for teachers to say, oh, here's where my kids are at?
Ninth grade, we have Aspire in ninth grade currently, is that what you said?
Six, seven, eight, nine, 10. So...
So we'd have, they'd have an Aspire in eighth grade, so going into ninth grade, we'd have that data, but then going into 10th grade, we wouldn't have additional new data.
But the teachers would have teacher-designed tests.
They would, absolutely. My only reason for pointing it out is I don't want to point out that we could cut this and this and then have you come back and say, wait a minute, now you're not doing anything in ninth grade. So that's the only reason.
But we still have MCAs.
Not through ninth grade.
So did we add, we added last year the ACT Aspire to the additional grades? Before that, it was just which?
We had perception, or...
Performance.
Performance series before that, and then NWA before that.
Okay, but not for all of those grades?
Correct, correct.
Because I would say from a parent's perspective, it feels like a lot, so I think that'd be an easy one to just not do.
Or we could apply for an innovation zone grant and do no assessment.
So then I have one more, so then I have one more that would get us not quite as much, it would get us about $1,000. And that is, we would reduce the amount of... And that is, we would reduce the amount of seventh and eighth grade fast bridge seats that we run. There's a feeling that we don't need to just blanket test everybody in seventh and eighth grade with that. So, that would get us about $1,000. So, all in all, if you did, if you did all of what I shared, that comes to about $89,000 in savings if in that assessment budget that we currently spend. So, we'd be reducing that. Now, I would, I would say back to Shelley's question, the only one to me that probably needs some conversation is that ACT. How comfortable would be, would people be with, with doing that for the junior class? So.
And what about free and reduced lunch? Is this, is that something where they automatically get it covered or they'd have to come up with that also?
Off the top of my head, I don't know how we do the free and reduced lunch with ACT because we currently pay for it.
Right, if it's free, it's not.
So, my guess is, it would probably work something like we do with everything else, probably a sliding scale type thing. I don't know the answer because we.
You'll pick for AP tests. And I think if I remember correctly, if your student has taken an AP test and you want to have a fee waived, you contact the school principal, or I mean, the secretary, and they do something.
Yep, and, and AP is something, AP is something that we, we've, we charge the maximum of what we can charge for AP testing.
Uh-huh.
To include the fees, and so there isn't anything to gain, well, we can't charge anymore for the AP test than what we do.
Right.
But yes.
No, but I would guess the same, same thing could be true.
It could be true.
If you wanna have that fee waived for the ACT, you just contact the school.
Yeah, and that's that sliding scale type thing.
Yeah. I figured it's like $64 if that's, if we have 625 students per grade.
For the ACT?
For the ACT, it's 40,000, that's $64. So, even if we covered half of it, it's still 30 bucks.
Right.
The other one you mentioned, and you mentioned it earlier, substituting one software for another software, there was a difference in there. Check somewhere, I'd feel better about it if you looked at quality, what are we losing?
One of the things I know just off the top of my head is, the way Edgenuity works is you pay one blanket fee regardless of whether you use it or you don't. The way Apex works is you purchase a certain number of seats based on how many kids need it. And so, that's where you're getting the savings, is if you only need 85 seats, so if you, let's just take.
So, what you're saying, billing is the mechanism.
Yeah, we pay a blanket.
But I'm saying, is there a quality difference?
I would say, personally, 'cause I think I had a kid who did one of those Edgenuity classes, I think it'd be good to try something different.
I, the reason I looked at Apex is I know other districts use it with a lot of success. And so, that was the reason, I, to your point, I didn't wanna, my nervous, my anxiety around that was to shift to something that would, would be right back to, well, that wasn't a good choice, so.
Yeah.
I would be comfortable with Apex 'cause I know that.
Well, and I'm just saying, that's enters, it gets back to what Don was talking earlier. Sometimes money can't be the only driver.
Yep.
What about PSAT? Because don't some students take that, but do they pay the whole amount? Is that it?
PSAT is done sophomore year, that's that October 16th date next year, but I can't remember. I don't remember that.
That's the one that qualifies.
That's over MEA, right?
That's the one, the day before MEA.
Or something.
But I don't remember.
But they don't pay for it?
I don't, I don't believe there's a.
Well, but I think it was only $10. So, the district must cover.
Here's what I can tell you, it was not a big enough cost that it made.
Made your list.
The assessment radar in terms of what we're spending.
Okay.
As far, so, so even if we do, it's not a huge.
Well, and that's kinda good. So, all 10th graders take that?
No.
No, but it's.
It's an option.
It's set aside on that day.
Is it only 10th grade or is it 11th?
Because you're supposed to take it in 11th grade.
Yeah, so it's an option for 10th grade.
It's PSAT, I believe it's for 10th, but neither here nor there. That's, that's what we've got.
In order to qualify for National Merit Scholar, you take it in 11th grade, right? And the score in your 11th grade year is the one that counts for the National Merit Scholar, right? So, a lot of kids take it in 10th grade because they wanna practice, right?
So, that's the assessment piece, so that's something to grapple with. Then, one of the things we wanted to look at was the high school credits. So, there, this, so to make it as simple as possible, it, it works out like this, if you go to the MDE's website, you'll see that they require 21.5 credits. If you do the translation into semester credit hours, which is what Stillwater and other school districts do, that works out to be 43 semester credits of required courses, broken down by course requirements and then an elective set. So, MDE then requires 43 semester credits, the equivalent of the 21 and a half. Stillwater High School currently requires 43 semester credits of required requirements to graduate. The difference is that MDE requires 14 of those to be elective credits. At the time when we added the additional health, FIAID, and global credit requirement, that was taken out of our elective set. So, if you look at it apples to apples, it looks like Stillwater High School has 11 elective options plus global, FIAID, health as requirements. So, you put those three back in there and you're back up to the 11 choices. So, long story short, we don't save anything by removing what is seen as the extra credits because those kids would be taking classes anyways to meet those then 14 electives. What you, what you end up having is really just a shift in choice. We, we require global, FIAID, and health. If you got rid of that, you'd, you'd open up three spots for kids to choose what they take. So, you don't save any staffing. So, then what we did, and I think.
So, that one's more philosophy.
So, that's a philosophical thing. So, then what we did is we said, okay, how, how, what if, all of that? And what we landed on was, what if we look at increasing that staffing ratio by one at the secondary level? So, right now, we staff at 33.08 to one, that's how we come up with in the formula, how many FTE. So, doing that for this year, we end up with 101.6 FTEs for the high school, 912. If we increased that 912 and we said, instead of 33.48, we went to 34.08, oh, I'm sorry, 08, 34.08, we would get a reduction of 2.98 FTE or an equivalent of roughly $320,000. Why that was something that we talked about and I talked about with Robach and with Matt Kraft is, while it increases the initial staffing ratio, it then also gives the high school administration the flexibility to figure out, where can we do this with the least amount of impact across everything? So, that would be 912. If you did 712, 'cause I have, I struggle with us increasing our class sizes for sixth graders coming into that middle school. So, if we just did 712, so we extended that, it, the number jumps to 4.42 FTE at an equivalent of 471,800 roughly of savings. So, while we can't do the credit thing, what's in the green sheet, and you'll see it, the credit is the, the credit thing is the white one, the white line there, and just above that is the green one, that's what I put in there. You'll see there's two lines, one is just the 912 and then one's the additional 712. So, it's, it's the only other thing that, that we've come up with where we could figure out how to gain a little bit out of our secondary staffing with also then allowing that secondary administrative group enough flexibility to figure out, where, where can we kinda modify and adjust this thing and still get it to work?
I like that. I like that idea of having them have that flexibility. My, my question was gonna be on the white, what happened to that AP psych going to?
Great question. So, I met with the AP psych teachers. And because AP psych has an AP psych test in the spring in May, if we reduce that to a semester-long class, a student takes AP from September to January and then has no AP psych between January and May and then is expected to sit for that AP test, that doesn't seem like a good idea. Likewise, if you took it second semester, you wouldn't be through all the content that you needed to be through by the time you sat for that AP psych test. And so, in talking with them, we kinda thought, this, this isn't a good solution to run it as a semester class if we're gonna continue to run AP psych and have kids sit for that test.
Would increasing by one at the high school give any more room then? Would we have any more, any classrooms come open?
So, no, I wouldn't say it would do that. This is, if you remember when, when Kathy tries to explain that by, when we would increase elementary at one, it doesn't, it doesn't fully distribute. That's why you give the principals the, the ability to figure this out. Because while we increase one on the ratio, all that that does is gives you a new total amount of teachers to make it all work. And so, you're gonna have some classes that will see no change whatsoever, you know, they're gonna still sit at 22 kids in that class 'cause only 22 kids sign up for that class. But you're gonna see some other classes that are gonna sit now, they're gonna start at 34 and they're gonna go 35, 36, 37. What we've tried to do in the past is try, at the secondary, is try to keep it within that three, three-kid range. But you will, that will be the fallout of that, is you're gonna have some classes that are gonna, that are gonna, you'll have more classes that will be in a position to sit at that higher level.
See, one of, one of the challenges, and again, I'm gonna try to be brief on this, when we look at rates naturalized class size, I think we're much more favorable, meaning smaller class size, when we talk elementary. When we talk to high school, we're bad or that level. And so, I'm very sensitive, I think we've done a better job, better job, not a great job, better job protecting the elementary than we have with the high school without this being on the table as well.
And the only thing that I would say to that is we have less flexibility at the elementary schools when we do things like this because kids live in sections.
Oh, yeah.
The other thing that the secondary buildings have the option to do with is, they, if you think of it, we give them a number, so the 101, it, they may decide that it makes more sense for us to reduce in this area that's a non-instructional area than to reduce the instructional area. We don't have that same level of flexibility at the elementary level.
Yeah, and it's a great point. Because what happens though is certain areas of the curriculum get hit harder on us.
Yep, and our principals have such a good working relationship with their staffs, I think it's really important for us, as much as we can, to give them the op, the autonomy to figure that out. I think we, we go down a different path when we say, get rid of this program, get rid of this program, get rid of this program. I, I think they need to have some say in that, how they do it.
I'm really glad to hear that you had that discussion and that, I, I completely and honorably agree with that, give them, they're the ones who know their buildings the best. So, I just had a quick question and we also need to plan for what we're gonna do, but at the secondary level, and I'm just, and this may be a less of a range question and more of a capacity question, a building capacity question, but I, I feel like I heard that Stillwater Middle is pretty tight right now. Is that accurate? And if so, to what, where is that accurate? Where are there potentially issues? And if we were to like, look at the range issue, is that going to affect Stillwater Middle or, or not? I'm.
I'm not sure where that conversation's coming from.
So, that's not, so that's not the case, at Stillwater Middle right now, okay?
Yeah, and actually, right now, Stillwater Middle should, I mean, unless something changes, should be as big as it's gonna be moving forward. Because the eighth grade class is, if you remember kind of our, our numbers thing, as we currently sit with our grades that are in the system, that eighth grade class is that, that, we just get into the 500s right there.
So, and you've talked to the principals about the range issue and their question?
Yep.
Okay, well, that makes me feel better too. Don, wanna?
Yes, we are.
That's good. I'm sure you are.
Constantly am.
One thing that, that I'm, that we used to do that would reduce your, your cost salaries, but would, it would actually work better for class size in that if, if we have, let's say, 20 teachers who retire this year, and if we went to a paid intern program, which is what we used to have, they pay, we paid the teacher interns who were working on their master's degrees, we paid them for a half starting salary, but they taught a full range, they taught a full class load. So, the, the result was this lower class sizes, but not reducing the curriculum. We had a total of 26 interns over the years that I was at the junior high, and we hired all 26 of them eventually as teachers. But it, it, it is, it is a way to reduce your staffing ratio, but not decrease your cla, increase your class sizes. And I know that, I know at least two universities are interested in getting back into that program.
And we've been in discussion with a couple of the universities about what that might look like. It doesn't, it can't work exactly the way that it worked in the past because of the licensure requirements. However, the last university I talked with a couple of weeks ago, Bethel, is, we have a couple of different programs that they're interested in exploring what, what it might look like to bring teachers who are in their student teaching phase. If I'm a math teacher, maybe bring them in with two math teachers and effectively reduce the instructional size. But we wouldn't be able to leave those student teachers on a full load, is, is kind of where we're at in that discussion, but we've started it, trying to figure out what the options are.
That's great.
Do they come for a full semester?
We actually talked about having teachers for the whole year. They'd start with us, they'd start with us at workshop, and that would be their, their experience would be more like a residency with the school district for a whole year. But that one's gonna take time, that's not an overnight.
Once we had a full year.
That's great.
So, can I suggest that we send out a survey to you about another date to get together? You've got a lot of information, if you have specific questions, I'll get this, the consultant piece, make sure that we've got the, all the numbers on there for you with Kathy tomorrow, I assume tomorrow we'll be able to see her, and then we'll get you a copy of that. And if there's more information you need on any of these things, just let us know.
Thank you very much.
Can you just mention this again, like, so.
Those, the budget adjustment?
How is this gonna go forward?
Well, the, so, what we're shooting for is, and that December 6th date is only because we try to get you things in your packet a week before, so you can decide to flex that. But on December 13th, we should really, really do a public report about what you're thinking of moving forward, lots of people wanna see that. And then you'd make the final decision saying yay or nay on those at, at December 20th. And remember, that is only for, or not only, but that's because of secondary registration and our staffing process begins at beginning of January. The kids come back from break and start right away, so if we're looking at any programming changes or those sort of things, kids have to know that so that we can adjust the registration.
So, we need to have a meeting prior to?
Prior to December 6th? So, we can get 13 or 15. Well, you can decide, if you, I mean, if you're at the meeting and have, and are looking at, the December 6th I put on there, 'cause we usually try to get you the packet, what that's gonna be in the board meeting before, so, but.